So I think this is a great opportunity to begin the meeting. And I just wanted to start by making a couple of observations. And I think just last night in Amherst, and for three of the towns that are part of the regional school district, the town meetings have approved their annual budgets. For a school committee, the approval of the budget, as well as also appointment and evaluation of the superintendent, is really the most important things we do as a committee. There are lots of other things that a school committee can do, but I think, in fact, that authority and that role is, in fact, the most important thing we do. It's the most decisive and has the most impact on the district as a whole. For the superintendent, it's pretty clear that one of the most important things that that individual does is to find and appoint and then lead their senior team within the district. And so, just as an observation, we've gotten a lot of comment from the public and as well as from staff members, the entire community. And a lot of that comment has been very robust, and very robust in a diversity of opinions and perspectives around what people believe is in the best interest of our schools as educational institutions, as organizations that are made up of professionals who are dedicated and caring for education in all the variety of activities that are done for the wellness and development of children and support of families. We've also heard a great deal about what the impact and best interest is in the programming and leadership of the school for children and students in our community. And I'm speaking out of turn because we actually haven't debated this as a committee, but I'm guessing that the committee holds a deep respect for all of the opinions and all the experience that the community has brought us around this sort of basket of issues that have come up. And so, for tonight's meeting, one of the things that, as facilitator, this is why I'm speaking now about it, that I have as an objective is to ensure that the conversation we have tonight, both on the committee as well as publicly, really embodies the level of respect, caring, and thoughtfulness that I know that, all I'm sure, all of you are bringing to this conversation and that the members of the committee are bringing to the seriousness of their work and that we're sure, because let's speak for myself, I'm sure, I think we're sure that Ms. Cunningham and Superintendent Morris are bringing to their jobs. That doesn't mean, of course, that there's not going to be disagreement. That doesn't mean there might not be extensive disagreement. But we're on a journey, and I feel like we've been in that journey. Dr. Morris was appointed last October. We've been on a journey together in terms of the path that he is going to lead us as a district and as a community. And I don't expect that as a committee or as a community or as a professional staff, everyone is always going to agree with every decision. What I hope is, as we're working through this and listening to Ms. Cunningham and Dr. Morris and having this interaction, that we can see this as being developmental in terms of supporting the kind of excellence that we know we have within our school district as well as the ambitions we have for it as well. One of the things, the final comments we make is, I'm going to say this now, and I may repeat it again a little bit later, and having said what I just said a moment ago, I'm sure it's unnecessary to specifically add that there are rules that govern the conduct of our meetings. And those rules exist in terms of norms and sort of ethics of behavior, but they also, and I think that's embodied by the comments I made earlier, around the kind of community I'm hoping we're fostering together and will be doing so through this work. But also, they also have usually legal implications too around how we talk about situations. And so, just as, so the public comments section, which we'll have, again, after the presentation, as mentioned, and I think we've said this many times before, you're recognized by the chair. You have up to three minutes to speak. The chair may permit extensions of this time. This is, by the way, from the official school committee policies that we have that are published on our website. Improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed, although as I said, I wouldn't anticipate any. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. If such behavior is exhibited, the chair may terminate that individual's privilege to address the committee. If a person persists in disorderly behavior, the person may be asked to withdraw from the meeting or may be removed from the meeting. All remarks will be addressed to the chair. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between residents and the committee. It's an opportunity to express one's opinion on issues of school committee business. Speakers may offer comments and opinions about the school operations and programs that concern them, but in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints about school personnel nor against any member of the school community, either by name or by reference to position. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. So anyways, I say that as a rule simply because I feel that as chair, if that occurs, I need to wield a heavy gavel. And I want to say this in advance, not knowing if anyone even has any comments that would constitute that kind of, be perceived as constituting that kind of comment. But, so in advance, there's no disrespect intended by me, but also, as I said at the beginning, I hope no matter how widespread the opinion, no matter how difficult this discussion can be, I think if we come at it from the perspective that I mentioned earlier, that in all the letters that I've seen, I think the committee has seen from the community, embodies that healthy desire to see a really wonderful community and a wonderful school district continue to be so and be supported in that way. And I think if we're all dedicated to that effort, hopefully, we can have a great conversation, dialogue tonight, but also, I think it'll embody the spirit of our work going forward. Anything else? Nothing else? With that, we will move into, oh my goodness, call to order, approve the minutes. What a come down. I actually, I missed the fact we were not going directly into the update. So hopefully, all of you are taking the time to peruse your minutes while I was talking. We have minutes for April 10th and April 13th, 2018. Are there edits that people have for these? Do you have a motion? Do you have a motion, please?
I move to approve the minutes of Tuesday, April 10th, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Does any edits, debates, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the minutes of April 10th, raise your hand. Say goodbye, aye. It carries unanimously. And people looked at 13?
Union 26 as well, I think we need to approve April 10th. Or Union 26 isn't here.
We don't have Union 26 here.
Oh, sorry. Bye-bye.
Here, I thought you were going to jump in on April 13, considering you were there. Ms. Demley?
I move to approve the minutes of April 13th, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
There are debates. Congratulations, Mr. Demley, for making that move. Seeing none, all those in favor, raising your hand. It carries, and is there any nays, any extensions? It carries 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 2, 0, 1 extension. Now! What a come down, right? So anyways, as I said, all the comments, hopefully, I said earlier, will carry forward now. Dr. Morris, if you have anything you want to say or open it up, please do.
Sure. So I'll speak briefly and then pass it over to Ms. Cunningham to add more. So, well, the topic says ARMS principal search update or middle school search update. I want to just make sure I'm sharing, I'm not sure this is, yeah, if I need to speak closer or...
Probably, see, actually, it is on, it hasn't been closer.
Yeah, sorry about that. So I first want to describe a bit about process more generally in Massachusetts and about screening committees and how professional staff are hired, and then I'll get more specific on the middle school. And Ms. Cunningham will describe in even more detail our path forward. So in Massachusetts, we have screening committees, sometimes they're called search committees. And for teacher positions, it's often principals or assistant principals who are in charge of forwarding recommendations to the superintendent. And that's essentially the role that they play. The recommendations are made as part of Mass. general law. The superintendent is listed as the hiring agent for all professional staff appointments. So I just want to clarify because there's been a number of, I've received a number of questions around how Massachusetts works, pre-ed reform, perhaps not pertinent, but perhaps maybe to some. The school committee was actually much more involved in the, as a hiring agent of professional staff after 1993, that shifted. And one thing I want to share is that, one of the reasons that change was made is that superintendents can have, be a check on and exert their value on diversity in hiring. So for instance, if we compare our current staffing to 2015, we're getting more racially, ethically diverse because of, perhaps because of that built-in accountability structure. So compared to 2015, our percentage of staff of color at Amherst in the region, it's just, we have a number of administrators and staff that work in both, so it's easier to combine those, has increased by 27 percent. Our percentage of people of color, staff of color for paraeducators and clerical has also increased, and we still have a lot of work to do. That's why in the past, you've heard Ms. Cunningham talk about the Parapathways program, et cetera. And so, we're pleased with that, and we still have, as I said, miles to go when we compare ourselves to our student demographics. And the only way that I know how to improve, given that 90 percent of our staff come back each year, or 88 percent of our staff come back each year, is every year, our hiring continues to be better than our mean, and our mean in terms of staff of color continues to rise. And over time, that's how we see ourselves achieving the mission that's been talked about at this table many a time. I think Ms. Cunningham's going to share one additional data point on that before we get more specific about the middle school.
Right. So I just wanted to add, as Dr. Morris mentioned, we are hiring for diverse staff. We are hiring for diverse staff, and one of the goals that I know the School Equity Task Force had had, I think it was goal number five, where they want me to talk about our hires for the year, and how many staff of color we had hired. And I believe that most importantly, not just checking a box as to how many are hired, the most important part would be how many are retained. And so, when we look at our data, and I looked at the data from 2013, 14, all the way to current, this year has been a year where we had over 90 percent of our staff who felt valued and felt secure enough to stay in their roles here in the district. So I just wanted to add that piece.
No, of course, I can't get this right. There we go. So, and that was, you know, for some, it may be apropos of nothing, that introduction, but because we've received a significant number of questions from the public and the community around who does the hiring, what's a screening committee, what do those people do, what's Massachusetts law say, who does the hiring, we thought it was just worthwhile to review that for everybody, so I apologize if that was old hat for some around the table. Getting down to the middle school specific, I was involved in making two decisions on the middle school principal search process. As with most principal search processes, I'm not part of the screening committee, but I do meet with the screening committee to hear their recommendation and their rationale. After I hear the recommendation rationale, I do some work in terms of digging deep into the resumes, the cover letters, their writing samples, and I often have access to additional information because of my role. And so, for me, I had to consider the profile and needs of the middle school, which has experienced incredibly high administrative turnover over the last 10 years. It's not over the two years or four years, it's been a long time with multiple administrative turnovers. In addition, the middle school's a two-year school, and something I shared with the staff when we met a couple of weeks ago, it requires intensive collaboration because it's a two-year school. So if you think about an elementary school where, yes, the kindergarten teacher should be working in some ways with the sixth grade teacher, but on a daily basis, their roles are pretty different. Their students are really different, they don't share students over, except over a seven-year span. When we have a school that has a two-year span, it requires everybody, all hands on deck, to be working actively together. And something I said to the staff and want to say publicly is, we really appreciate the work that the staff has done despite the administrative turnover that's happened at the middle school. It continues to be a wonderful place for students to attend, and that's because of the efforts of the staff individually and collectively to support the diverse needs of students. However, that was a major aspect of my thought process of making sure that we had candidates, given the history of the middle school, given the unique needs of the middle school who fit that. And I made the determination that the pool wasn't any individual candidate, but the pool wasn't sufficiently matched to the needs of the middle school. It wasn't anything that the candidates were deficient or anything personal. I was always looking for a match of what the middle school needs and what I was viewing in terms of the pool. And I went back and Ms. Cunningham and I reviewed the notes from when we visited. After I was hired, we visited all the schools in a listening session and looking at what, the question wasn't what are you looking for in a principal, but it was talking very much, what are you excited about your school, what are challenges your school is facing? And that was a great data source for me to review as I was considering how to manage this decision. And I wish I could share more legally. I wish I could share more. There are both legal, ethical, and I think best practice constraints. Legally, we had candidates apply for a job, they're confidential until they're asked to be finalists. We didn't ask any of them to be finalists, therefore, I can't speak to anything more specifically. Ethically, my ethical boundary is that when we hire anyone, we think about principals or Ms. Cunningham last year, we hire people in high-profile positions. I only talk about the person we hire, not the people who do not hire. It's just my ethical code that I'm only interested in building the reputation of people we hire and not negatively impacting people who apply for a position in the district. And finally, I want high-quality candidates to continue to apply to our district. That's in everyone's best interest, and having a superintendent critique individual candidates, even if their names were public, is not in the best interest of the district moving forward. It's a wonderful place to work, it's a challenging place to work, and we want to make sure that when people are brave enough to put in application for high-profile positions, that we are encouraging that and not actually having a negative impact on future applicants. So that was the first decision I made. The second decision I made was to appoint Dr. Bodie as the interim principal for the next school year. Subsequent to making that announcement, I had talks with our legal counsel, DESI's legal counsel, and DESI's licensure office. And through those discussions, I identified and learned that I was not permitted to offer a contract due to the licensure status and what would have been a multi-year waiver process, laying out the facts to all three of those bodies. They came back with the same information and answer. So I want to say publicly, I regret making that second decision. It was a mistake, and the mistake has nothing to do with Dr. Bodie's work or Dr. Bodie's character. I want to make that crystal clear. It's not a reflection on anything to do with Dr. Bodie's work or character. Has to do primarily with the licensure issue that I learned, and I'll own that. I think another problem with the decision was it led to a perception among some in the community that those two decisions were the same decision. Decision to not bring finalists forward, while there's a linking, they were two distinct decisions that I made. I regret this one, I don't regret the first one. And I want to thank Dr. Bodie because she shared the licensure piece with staff, which in my opinion, incredibly brave thing to do, and I appreciate how she's walked through this. And as I said, one of the things that we try to talk about growth mindset with all of our students and all of our staff is, we intend to make it learn from those. And for me, I've learned from it, I've done a lot of deep reflection about it. And Ms. Cunningham is reviewing the status, licensure status of all of our employees to ensure we're compliant with the regulations set forth with DESI, which changed when we went from No Child Left Behind, the Every Child Succeeds Act, it was a significant shift in that. The new commissioner of education was actually in Western Mass. last Friday and was speaking to his experience in Lawrence. He was the former receiver of the Lawrence Public Schools, which is essentially a state-appointed superintendent, and his challenges with some of those changes, particularly in his efforts to diversify the faculty in Lawrence Public Schools. And Ms. Cunningham will be presenting more information about licensure more generally, as she mentioned earlier, at an upcoming meeting of the school committee. I'm going to now pass it to Ms. Cunningham to describe how we're moving forward at this point.
So, Dr. Morris and I met with the middle school staff twice. The first time we met with them, we were there just to listen, just to hear their concerns and hear what they're, they wanted moving forward. And after that listening session, there were people who were not able to attend, and they came and met with us after the session, the first session, or they emailed us with some information. So we took all of their information, the notes from the meeting, we heard from many of our community members as to what they would like to see going forward, and we took all of that into consideration, and we went back and met with them a second time. During that second meeting, we let them know that our decision was, one, based on what they said, and, two, based on what the needs are. So the first part of that decision was, the concerns were out there that there was something flawed with the hiring process. So we are forming a hiring committee to look at our district-wide hiring process. So not just how things took place at the middle school, but how things are taking place across the district, just to make sure that it's transparent, it's inclusive of all voices, and that we are maintaining our commitment to hiring a diverse workforce. So I had a letter sent out to all faculty and staff throughout the whole district and to parents, guardians, just everyone who has an email with us so that they can opt in and express their interest in joining that committee. That committee will hopefully complete its work by the end of May. So the other thing that happened during that meeting was that some of the staff mentioned that they would like to be able to have a say in how the description is written for the posting for the interim principal. And so, I sent out a survey to the staff, just asking them about the characteristics, the characteristics of the future principal for that school. So that survey, I believe, closes at the end of this week. After that time, I will sit down and work with Dr. Morris and the HR staff and create the posting for that position. So in that survey, there were lists of attributes, and then there was another box in case we missed something, that they can write in what they felt was needed. The other decision was to have a two-year interim principal. And the need for a two-year principal really extends to the fact that we're exploring over the next few years, other things such as the master building or building usage. Also, we're having a long-range strategic plan, planning process taking place. And so, having someone in the transformational piece for the two years will help to have those actions take place without interruption. So that's why we're looking at two versus one year for the interim. So the plan is to have a new screening committee formed within the next few weeks after the other committee has done a lot of the work. And the timeline would be this Friday, the committee, the screening committee or the process committee, as I'll call it, will have an opportunity to now hear what our next steps will be, what dates we're looking to have these meetings scheduled, and answer some of the questions as to who will be on the committee. Because I've heard from approximately 15 individuals already, most are from our stakeholders in our community and our parents. So after that, or while they're doing that, we will create the posting for the principal search, and then possibly by the first week of June or so, we hope to continue with the process in finding a principal for arms. So I know that there's been a lot of questions about licensure, and I know that, once again, that was one of the SETF goals, the School Equity Task Force goals, that they wanted a report on. And initially, I was going to report on that in June. However, with this being so new and so requested, I plan to report on that in the next meeting that we have.
At this point, you know, we thought we'd open it up for any questions from the committee.
Okay. Ms. Demley?
So, thank you for laying that out. I guess I just want to first acknowledge on a personal level, this has been a pretty hard issue for me to work my way through, being on the school committee, which is all about process and not people, and yet, I just, I'm one year removed from being a middle school parent for six years in a row. And, you know, being on the governance council there and volunteering and having the opportunity to work with so many amazing teachers and students, to be in a situation like this is kind of heartbreaking. So, but, you know, trying to keep it as much as process and not people. You know, one of the questions about how those decisions sequenced is, so if, you know, the licensing issue aside, if at one point you were comfortable and happy with the current principal going forward as the interim, then why insert a process that could wrap up very soon, depending on how things go, that might not allow that current principal to be part of that, if the licensure issue is, could possibly resolve soon? And I know I'm walking a gray area, but it's a question that's been asked a lot, and so I just wanted to see if at all you could respond to that.
Yeah, sure. So I think, two things. And I appreciate you pointing out that it's, you know, an awkward conversation, it certainly is for us as well. I think with, the key word to use is possibly, and so, that creates a real challenge for us and I think for the organization. DESI, our attorney, were very clear that possibly doesn't sort of cut it in terms of planning. And I think that therein lies a real challenge, that to set up a process for any individual, and it's no disrespect, I mean, I'm just going to be speaking plain language, right? It's the current principle that you're describing that's based in possibly and based on one individual is not something that we can really pursue. Whether licensure happens or not is an open question. DESI is very clear on that. You know, not everyone who applies for license in any route gets accepted, and I think there's some real challenges in the timeline and uncertainty that go along with that. I think there's also critical work the principals do over the summer, that scheduling all that, those pieces, that does require stability to get ready for the next school year. So probably as far as I can go, if you're starting, I feel like I'm starting down a road that's talking about an individual, not a process, and I'm starting to catch myself and feel uncomfortable with that.
Are there other questions from the committee?
So I'm just trying to understand the formation of these two new committees. So I want to make it clear, so we're forming a committee that will look at the process. Will that committee wrap up its work before we start the new screening committee, or is that new screening committee going to be informed by the work that the, what I'll call the hiring process committee is doing?
So I'll say both. The first committee will be formed, and they will look at what has been done and what can be better. While they're doing their work, so let's say they come up with the plan that this is how a screening committee should be organized, and that is done within the first three days, let's say. We can then start the process of creating a search committee for the position.
Okay. I guess my only concern is about the really tight timeline, and I wonder if you could just share with us how you plan to address just how compressed it's going to be.
Many meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Demley?
So, thank you for taking the time to explain your thinking and your process. You know, I want to address something that I heard Ms. Cunningham kind of hint at a little bit earlier, which was a process to evaluate licensure for all staff and administrators. And, you know, I want to, I want to kind of put a fine point on that because I think when you were first hired, I had sat down with you to discuss, you know, sort of what your thinking was for the district and where you planned on going and all of that. And you said to me very clearly at that time, which was back in, you know, early fall, right, that you were going through this process and that most intentionally, you wanted to support the licensure of all staff and administrators to the degree possible. And so, I think that's an important point to raise in the context of this because what I'm listening for is to see if this is some sort of emerging pattern where we have, you know, been making decisions like this that could potentially jeopardize our hiring, jeopardize, you know, the district moving forward. hiring, jeopardize, you know, the district moving forward. And what I'm hearing is that actually, you know, you, especially Ms. Cunningham, came on board, very cognizant of the fact that there needed to be alignment with state law and regulation. And I very much appreciate that, as I'm sure a lot of people will. And I also appreciate Dr. Morris, you know, working closely with you to try to make that happen, to support staff going through that. And I guess my question mostly is, you know, moving forward, I think, thinking about process, and even aside from what the screening committee would potentially, or the hiring process committee, excuse me, would be coming up with, what steps are we taking to ensure that we are, all our hiring processes is in alignment with state law, that our licensure requirements are, you know, is there, is there like a review, an audit that will happen? If you can just describe that, I think that would help my thinking anyway.
So you are correct. When I did start, I started looking at many of our, well, all of our staff, to see where they were as far as their license through Desi. And the ones who needed waivers, we worked on getting waivers, and we worked on making sure that they were on track, and as much as possible, right? I met with many several times throughout the year. Some had monthly meetings with me, some were offered the opportunity to have, to work with a mentor to help them to get through the process. Some were offered an opportunity to work with a cohort, because there were many of them who needed to get through that licensing process. Most of our postings now say things such as license for this particular position is required, and as principals look at the people that they are calling to interview, they are looking for licenses. I'm not sure if that has been done before, but I'm sure that it's being done now. So, things like that are taking place, as well as many others, that are making sure that we are on track to being fully licensed. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Anyone new, first off, but there may not be. Curious. Mr. Demling?
So, you know, one, one topic that has, has come up over the course of these conversations in the public is, is how we deal, as individuals, how we deal with racial bias and the reality of racial bias. And speaking frankly, as a white guy, it's something I think about a lot, because I want to be very cognizant that it's, it's a latent potential in anything I do. And so, when I'm making an important decision, and that issue is risen, I want to always honor and respect the question. But then, my second instinct is to not want to jump to conclusions, either way, right? I don't want to presume that racial bias hasn't been a factor in my decision, just because I think I'm a swell guy. And I don't, you know, want to think that it has, just because, you know, I'm feeling a different way. So, I don't know if you could just talk in general about, you know, you're obviously, you know, in a position of hiring authority, and this issue has been brought up. You can only say so much legally, and so that sort of limits, you know, detailed conversation, but just maybe in a general way of how you as a professional, somebody who obviously values, you know, racial equity, deals with that.
Yeah. So, I think there's, there's three frames that I try to use when I'm thinking on that question. So the first is that I know that our students, and we heard it actually at the last school committee meeting, are cognizant that there is a gap between the race ethnicity of our student population and our staff population. And it's really important that we find, and I'm going to use this term very intentionally, I, you know, I'm going to use it so intentionally, I'm going to rethink my language. So, that we were developing both internally and then finding externally, because I think both are really important, I think the Parapathways program in particular, staff members of color who can take on responsibilities, be highly successful, and are supported to be successful in our district. I also am aware that in, I'm not aware of any district, and certainly not here, of a year where there aren't excellent white candidates who have experiences working in diverse populations with great experience, you know, great backgrounds that fit our dynamics. So for me, both are true, it's not an either/or. And when I'm looking at any candidate who I feel like has high potential to be successful in our community, certainly I'm aware of their, their background. And I also am conscious that someone's race ethnicity is not a reason to hire someone in and of itself, right? That, that, that leads to a bunch of unintended consequences, both for our student population as well as for our staff population and community, that's really important. So, I'm constantly asking the questions you asked. I think those are the right questions to ask, right? What biases do I bring to the table? How am I viewing these candidates? And what are the potential for growth within that? And so, what I think we've done well, I cited some statistics earlier, and by we, I'm really indicating, well, I end up being the hiring agent as superintendent, in almost all situations, one, or sometimes like in this situation, a couple, candidates are being recommended to me. And so what I want to really appreciate about our principals in general is, and our human resource department, is they're actively seeking, right? So it's not a passive system, it's a very active system, both of internal people who have talent, and I'm not just picking on the Parapathways program multiple times unintentionally, but we've had other versions of this before, from special education, we've worked with a number of stakeholder groups a couple of years ago, because we knew that we had retirements in that field. We knew we were going to have vacancies, we knew we had high quality, there's a lot of our par educators work in special education with our students. So, I think, I'm not doing as clear a job as I'd like to answer your question, but the biggest frame for me is who's going to do the best job for students, and how do we have a more representative sample? It's not only Hobson, I wish I had like a screen and could show a video, because she said it so much better than me. But it, it's not a either/or question, it's an and question. And that's the lunch we reach through them. And I'm never, we're never interested in hiring someone who can't, who we don't believe will be successful in the district. And that could be, that's not a race ethnicity piece, that could be, they went to Harvard University and got a great degree, and have advanced degrees in mathematics, and when the high school interviews them, and they do a model less, and they can't connect to kids, they're not going to be successful. Doesn't matter if they wrote the formulas that's in the textbook, if they can't relate to our students, they're not going to be a successful educator in our district. So, it's multifaceted, and I'll get a little cleaner on my thoughts on that, and maybe share them back at the beginning of the next school committee meeting, because I think it's a really important question to be asked and answered.
So, in the moment, we're going to be at a point where we're going to transition from the school committee's engagement on this issue to active listening with the community. And so I'm saying this partially because the train is about to leave the station for school community members, and I have something I'm going to ask. But, and if you look at the agenda, we're actually not revisiting this item today. And so I'm sort of urging school committee members who have something on their mind that they want to ask or say, to not feel caught at the point I suddenly move towards the community, and then you feel like you've, you, you know, if you'd only added another second, you would have formulated your question and your thought. So, the question I have for both Ms. Cunningham and Dr. Morris, and I know this is kind of a challenging question, and so I apologize for it. You mentioned earlier that there has been significant leadership turnover at the middle school over the years. You've talked about how extending the leadership, I mean, the overall teaching is, the instruction environment the middle school is. And given the pathway or approach you're talking about moving forward with, you're, there's sort of a unique and singular responsibility on both of you, knowing that there would be a new interim coming in for a period of potentially a couple of years. And then, dueling microphones now? And then, in case, in case you're missing any of this. No, forgive me if people can't. There's just a sort of unique and singular responsibility in terms of thinking about how to support the middle school, and it's fully dimensions, obviously the students, but also the staff, the professionals that we care deeply about, and I know you do. So I'd love to get your thoughts on, if you have thoughts literally, when you're looking out, in other words, over the next few months or the next year, what's your perspective on engaging in support? And obviously, the key point is, the committee's gotten a bunch of letters and communications, and so it's not unknown to us, what, what at least a number of staff people have expressed as their views. And so, I just, I feel like, I'd feel irresponsible not to ask this question, or for the committee to ask this question, given the fact that it's one thing, sort of to talk about a process that you think, you know, might provide some stability in terms of structure. And then it's another question to say, we still have an organization filled with human beings, who are going to bring their own felt experience and emotions and perspective to the day, and ultimately, you know, with this pathway, a lot of that burden is going to fall on both of you, for better or for worse. And in that sense, going back to what I said at the beginning, our job was to hire you, and so now we've done that. And so, and so it's not, it's not, it's a hard ball in the sense that I don't know if you have an answer for it today. It's not intended to be challenging in a sense that I don't think you have an answer for, or could have an answer.
I would just like to say that when we had the first meeting at the middle school, one of the words that stood out to me was the word healing. It was something that they talked about, and that, you know, when, when I hear Dr. Morris talk about all the different principles or leadership that they had over the years, and, you know, I saw many, well, enough members in that meeting cry, right? I felt that the need is for someone who's strong enough to help that healing process along. The other thing that I noticed were that there were some in session who did not, they didn't speak, and some who came later and spoke, hoping for privacy. And so, as we look for our next person, I'd like us to be able to have someone who's able to work with that, and help them all to come together, so that they feel united, all voices are heard and respected, and that the healing does take place. So I know that part of my job, in my role, and with our office, we have to work to help that to take place, for the individual who then is interim, to make sure that that happens for the staff.
Can I add just a little bit? I think the other thing that I think is truly important, given the number of things that will be discussed at the regional level in the next couple of years, is to have incredibly clear priorities, so that whoever the interim is understands what she or he, what the major tasks, major priorities are, that they can dig their teeth into. Because I think in addition to the running the school, there's also the kind of 10,000 feet, you know, are we going to study sixth grade, and what does that look like? Is everybody 12, right? That master planning piece is pretty central, so what's their intersection with that? And I do think, kind of the last thing I'll say, is also that an interim, just having been one, just understanding what things are the, I mean, I'm reiterating myself, but I don't want to say it slightly differently, what things are the priority, and how to walk the staff and support the staff to have their voice as being central. So, kind of all the things that we're talking about the next couple of years, that I'm using the word, the phrase 10,000 feet for, really needs staff to be involved. And so, we need to support that person to have a process where staff feel actively a part of that. Whatever decisions end up getting made on the master planning piece, whatever decisions get made in terms of strategic planning and having that. And so, setting some priorities for that individual, and then supporting them to be actively collaborating with staff along those dimensions would be, I think, one of the core components of my role in supporting that individual to be successful.
So I want to run down the line here, and just see if anyone has any, anything they want to mention or bring up, and then we'll run through it, and then go to the public. Okay.
Just one last comment, and I think it's, it's mostly to reiterate something that Ms. Spitzer had mentioned, which is just about timing, the condensed amount of timing. And I have to say, I probably, that is the one thing that concerns me the most, I think, with this conversation, is, you know, that we are, and I completely agree with the ideas and the way that you have put forth this process, the way that you're describing this process, but I feel like we need to do it right, and that ensuring, especially if we're going to be evaluating what our hiring process has been in the past, because both of you are fairly new to these positions, and have just, you know, without that history of how things have been done previously, there's a lot of learning that we're all going to be doing as part of this. And so I feel like it's important to take that time that you need to make sure that you get it right, and that you really understand the information, the data that's coming back from staff who have been here for a very long time, as well as parents in the community and all of that, right? And so, I would encourage you to think about that, about, you know, making sure that you do have enough time to gather all of that and to make sense of it, and then to translate it afterwards. Because I think that, you know, you're right, there's a lot of healing that needs to be done, there's been a lot of, of, you know, tumult around, not just this particular process, but I think, you know, quite a few others in the district, and it's helpful to learn from those experiences, but only if you can actually translate that into, you know, a new way of doing things moving forward.
I have a licensing question. We have the parents who are working on that first cohort with their MTEls. I'm curious, how are we doing with assisting teachers with the SEI endorsement? Because last spring, this committee put forward a policy that ensured that teachers could be hired without it, as long as that classroom didn't require it. And I'm just curious how we're doing on helping, assisting those teachers get that endorsement.
So, we have had course, classes held after school for teachers who need it. We have also looked at the licensing of our teachers, and those who needed it, we invited them to join the classes. So they are, most of our teachers do have it, the ones that need it are working on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, when, when the leadership transition is, is so publicly volatile like this, it can actually lead to concerns, particularly on the part of parents, about, well, what's this building going to be like? And so I didn't want to end the conversation without just commenting, again, from having been a parent there for six years. And through those six years, I think it was four principals. And so some transitions were smooth, and some were, were more volatile. And, you know, the thing that I directly observed was just what an amazing place, what a special, I would almost say, unique place, like this building is for educating students, and the opportunities that students have. And the thing that was amazing to me is that that was so consistent, regardless of the volatility or not, of the administration, whether in the building or larger in the district. And, you know, I really attribute that, it sounds kind of corny, you know, but to the spirit and the dedication of the teachers and the students. And, you know, there's like 100,000 examples of this, that I won't all iterate now, but, you know, like just this past year, with the student walkout and teach-in, how that was handled collaboratively with teachers and students. This, this Sound Bites Cafe, which you might not know, there's a science teacher volunteers her time to bring in researchers from UMass who get kids all excited, you know, at a really young age, and kids at, you know, at that age getting engaged in high-level topics. And the Immigration Stories project that I think is, has a reception next Tuesday, where kids, working with students and the teachers, about expressing their own personal story. And I'm just scratching the surface, I'm just flyby examples, and, and I saw these happen again and again and again over six years. And so, I mean, I would just say to any parent who's maybe anxious or thinking about, you know, is that place still going to be there for me, and say, absolutely, it's going to be there for you, and it's, it's a wonderful opportunity in so many aspects, because of the students that, the energy they bring, and the teachers who are so devoted to always providing that.
Well, I think I'll just echo what Mr. Demling said quickly, with just that my experience at the middle school was, two things I remember, I remember strongly was that I was in a group that dissected a shark in, on the table of a science classroom after school, with I think the same person who's doing the science thing that you mentioned. And also, I had one of my favorite math teachers who got me interested in math, and STEM in general, which I'm now going to college for. So, the middle school was really an important factor in how my academic life is shaped, and I, so I just wanted to echo that point.
Thank you. So I think, I guess my final comment would echo the question I asked earlier, is just the observation that, and I'm sure you'll do it anyway, but I've seen, we've talked about it, we've had presentations about ways in which you're engaging the about it, we've had presentations about ways in which you're engaging the staff regularly throughout the district, in different ways. But I think that that process, given the perspectives we've heard, and the passion with which those perspectives have been expressed, and I'm sure will be again tonight, that I think there's, you can't do it too much, in terms of engaging and ensuring that if anything, you're more present, but I think you've expressed your concern and interest in doing that, so I don't want to, I don't want to belabor it, but I think it's a moment that requires it. So moving forward to public comment and announcements, I guess we'll do announcements eventually from the school committee, so just be patient, keep your notes together. As mentioned earlier, we talked about the ground rules earlier, I'm sure, I think most people are still here, so I'm sure everyone will be deeply respectful of that, and I hope they will. Three minutes, I'm going to be a little lenient with the three minutes, but not endlessly lenient. So try to keep a clock in your head, because also, I don't want to have to gavel anyone, certainly feel like I'm being rude, or anyone feeling like we're being rude. So I'm going to start with the list that I have, and call people up, and then after that, take whoever wants to speak. And we have this on the agenda until 7:50. We're running a little late now, so that could take us to nearly eight, but in all honesty, unless the committee ends up objecting, I'm going to let people talk until they don't feel like talking anymore. So with that, we'd like Sonia Nieto, please.
Hello. My name is Sonia Nieto. I've been an educator for over 50 years, beginning as a classroom teacher in Brooklyn, New York, and completing my formal academic career at UMass, where I was a teacher of education for 25 years, specializing in multicultural education. I'm still a slow child, I'm a teacher for 23 years, and curving with the co-assistant principals, and large responsible for the immigration unit, and a half-time ESL teacher at Arms, is my daughter. Patty Bodie is a former doctor's student, a good friend, and a co-author for several publications of the children. I'm here this evening to speak about the situation at Arms. I want to address comments that I heard at the previous school committee meeting, because I found some of them misleading, inaccurate, or untrue, and I believe they've muddied the waters, not to mention that, that reputations have been sullied as well, and I think we need to take that into consideration. I also want to comment on why the decision not to reappoint Dr. Bodie is terribly wrong. It's evidence that she and her entire staff have transformed Arms into a stable, nurturing, and multicultural environment with high expectations for children of all backgrounds. Yet to say, to quote one of the people who spoke at the previous school committee meeting, that Dr. Bodie is not even minimally qualified, and that there were, quote, "a myriad of reasons" that she wasn't recommended by the screening committee for the principal's position, and then to mention "only certification" is at best dishonest, suggesting that many other factors were part of the committee's decision, without saying what those factors were. Having been involved in certification programs for many years in higher education, I know that it's not the only requirement for being a qualified administrator. More important are extensive knowledge, as well as solid experience and expertise in middle school education, among other qualifications. So to imply, as another speaker did, that people at Arms do not seem to understand how to deal with middle school youngsters, this despite the fact that the Arms leadership team, all three of whom have won important social justice and education awards, and who have a total of 75 years of experience at the middle school level among them, is uninformed, at least. To insinuate that Dr. Bodie was selected, quote, "to advance friends in their careers," while providing no further explanation, is unjust. And to claim with a straight face that words like "multicultural education" cannot be used for a white person's resume, is to misunderstand not only the goals of multicultural education, but even serious, more seriously, to dismiss Dr. Bodie's long, lifelong commitment to equitable and socially just education. It's through these kinds of allegations that reputations are ruined. I'll leave it to others who work at the school and know best to describe some of the great things that Patty Bodie and her entire staff have done in the past two years. I'll just say that as an outsider looking in, she's done an extraordinary job of gathering the energy, commitment, and creativity of the Arms staff to advance the goals of an anti-racist and socially just education, through curriculum, pedagogy, and school climate. I believe your decision will have widespread negative repercussions for the students, the staff, and the entire school system. Let me end by making a personal plea to you, Dr. Morris, and to you, members of the school committee, to do what you can to reverse this terrible decision, so that the Arms community can continue striving to provide a highly innovative, anti-racist, and rigorous education for all students. Thank you.
Nadla Tavard Smith?
I hope this letter that I'm going to read from, sharing my experience at Arms, will help to shed some light on the qualities that Dr. Bodie has, and that we should look for the next principal at Arms. I'm Nadla Tavard Smith, and I'm an English as a Second Language teacher at Arms. I'm originally from Brazil, and I self-identify as Afro-Latina. I was recommended by Dr. Patty Bodie, and hired by Dr. Morris in July 2017. Before starting work at Arms, I had heard exceptional things about the work of the administrators and staff. I was thrilled to work for a former art teacher who has a master's in education with concentration in multicultural education. In addition, the interim assistant principal is a self-identified Latina ESL teacher, and we also have a music teacher. I was certain that Arms was the perfect place for me. Little did I know that I was about to embark on an educational experience that encompassed a variety of issues related to diversity. First of this, first day of school at Arms was the most remarkable first school day of my entire career as a teacher. It definitely set the tone for what was to come throughout the school year of 2017, 2018. The very first day of school, the entire school, students and staff, were reminded of the very own reason we were all gathered in that school. On the white screen was projected the famous painting, "The Problem We All Live With," by Norman Rockwell, of a very infamous moment of American history, racial segregation. As I sat there in awe, looking at the painting, and listening to Patty so skillfully guide the students for all the analysis of it, I more than ever felt that I was at the right school. The right school for me, an immigrant Afro-Latina woman. The right school for a person like me, who dreams of equity. The perfect school for someone like me, who is committed to social justice. As the days, months went by, the conviction that I was at the right place just grew stronger. Seeing the administration and staff commitment to inclusive and equitable quality education for all students made me very proud to be part of the school team. Critical things part of any regular day at Arms, and can be found in any classroom you walk into, in the lobby, on the walls, and in the minds and hearts of its team members. Some of our extraordinary educational projects and exhibitions have been featured in the local media. All I want to convey in this speech is my admiration for the work done at Arms by every single member of its team, and especially our leader, Patty Bodie. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Thibodeau. I'm a math teacher and the curriculum leader at Amherst Regional Middle School, and I'm an Amherst, Massachusetts resident. I'm a proud teacher at the middle school. July 1st marks my sixth year here, and at that time, I will be, I guess, greeting my fourth principal. Despite this inconsistency, the staff has continued providing excellent social, emotional, and academic instruction, but none of those years more powerful and innovative than the past two years. A month ago, some statements were made in this forum that were inaccurate, about the work happening at Amherst Regional Middle School, and we as a staff just want to correct the record. So, I'm writing this letter just to address those inaccuracies previously stated, and to highlight some of the many ways our school has flourished under Dr. Bodie's leadership. Dr. Bodie is an inspiring leader for the way she listens to the needs of staff, and then empowers and supports us. This was evident from her introductory meeting with the staff, when she not only shared about herself, but she gave us index cards, and she asked us to share who we are, what was working in the middle school, and she asked us what were our wishes in terms of professional development. That very summer, she made time to meet with me, to talk about my role as math curriculum leader. She welcomed me to discuss the goals of our department. She frequently asked, "What does your department need from me? Let me know if I can help you in any way." I'm probably going to tear up a little bit. Dr. Bodie empowered me to make changes our department knew were necessary to improve equity in our instruction. From that, our department started a process to begin the heterogeneous grouping instruction that is starting in the seventh grade. From my first interaction with Patty, I felt valued, and I felt supported as an educator. Since then, on numerous occasions, Dr. Bodie and I have discussed individual students' needs in math, and she has helped me consider creative ways to support students where they are academically. On our first official teacher workday of 2016-2017 school year, Patty involved the staff in a mini lesson, including visual thinking strategies, featuring the painting "Aspects of Negro Life: From Slavery to Reconstruction" by Aaron Douglas. On the first official workday of 2017-2018, she led teachers through a part of her hand painting lesson. We began this year with activities and conversations about identity and race. She modeled for us how teachers can address difficult conversations in a classroom, and reminded us that social justice is a part of the work we do every day. Dr. Bodie has been instrumental in leading change and improving opportunities for social and emotional and academic instruction appropriate for middle schoolers. I could go on and on about the positive changes, and the positive ways that Dr. Bodie has contributed to our school, and have benefited my students and me. I'll leave off with, and we'll read the whole letter, that just this past weekend, our school, well, our school has been taking part in this district-wide initiative called Challenge Success, which was started by Mike Morris, in which staff, parents, and students attended a conference, and have been reading some works, and really looking at how to focus on students' social, emotional, and health, and to sort of create a positive climate at the middle school, and for adolescents at that age. This past weekend, we attended a workshop as a follow-up to the Challenge Success, and at the regional conference, I and other representatives from Arms were able to meet with other schools, and to talk about the work we do here at Arms. And we were commended for the creative ways that we support the whole student. Other schools in Massachusetts stated that they were planning to share our practices with their schools to help them implement. And so I highlight these details to say that there's a clear reason why I love coming to work here, and I probably tell others that I'm a teacher at Amherst Regional Middle School. Thank you.
And the comments should be close to three minutes as possible.
Sure, I'll summarize this very long letter that we all wrote together. My name is Ben Levy, I teach middle school at, I'm sorry, I teach English at Arms, and I have a letter that I'd like to submit to the school committee. It's a letter that highlights some of the things that Tiffany just spoke to, and tries to draw upon the long, long list of things that Arms staff have put together over the past couple of weeks, of accomplishments that we have felt were Patty Bodie's responsibility. And part of the reason why we wanted to do that is because we felt that there was a kind of misrepresentation of our school and the community, and that that representation was governed by a couple of voices, and we wanted to be loud and proud about how happy we are as teachers at Arms, and how proud we are as teachers. So, I'm here to represent 52 staff members, who in four hours, from lunch onward, read and signed their names to this document. Essentially what this document is, is it's organized by categories, categories that Patty Bodie has, or, actually, I think I gave you my document.
Oh, did you?
Here, I have a number of handouts for you all. It's my English teacher in. I don't have enough, so you have to look with a partner. No, I think I got mine back again, it's got red on it. I think, I'm going to kind of go off the cuff, actually, because it's really long. So, I want you to read it, actually, because we spent a lot of time looking at it. We spent a lot of time thinking about all the, all the reasons we're proud of this school. And I think that the tears that you all witnessed on those days that you came to see us, that we could understand, could be interpreted that we need healing, or that we are broken, I think what those tears were, were tears of relief, and tears of loss. Tears of relief that we have Patty Bodie as our principal, and tears of loss that we So, I'm actually not going to go into more detail about this letter, I just urge you to read it, and hear the voices of the 52 and more staff members, I'm sure, who are proud to call Arms their home, particularly under Patty's leadership.
So we have, I have a line that has two names on it. Claire?
Claire's going to speak, she's here.
Okay, well, I was going to say you could both speak, if you wanted to.
Thank you.
If you wanted to.
Hi.
Please.
I'm Claire Coco. Are you hearing me? Okay, hi. I'm reading this on behalf of 49 staff people at the middle school. "We appreciate Dr. Morris and Ms. Cunningham taking the time to conduct a listening session with Arms staff on April 26th about the search process, process for a principal. At that session, several staff clearly stated their wish to have more input into the search process, and more transparency. It is important that they heard this feedback and made efforts to address it. However, we have grave concerns about the timing of their proposal to create a committee to," and their words from a letter dated May 3rd, "review current practices, formalize the district's commitment to social justice, and hiring a diverse workforce, and create a consistent district-wide process for future searches. These are indeed critical needs. We do not dispute these goals. We are extremely concerned, though, that all this can be accomplished in the timeframe outlined. This committee will start its work no earlier than May 14th. By the end of the month, the committee will need to take on huge and important tasks. In the meeting with Arms staff on May 3rd, Dr. Morris said that each school in the district has a different method of searching and searching for and hiring staff. This means that this committee will need to evaluate each school's existing hiring process. Then, the committee will need to determine a uniform process that will meet all schools' needs, as well as address our commitment to diversity and equity. This task needs to be accomplished by the end of May, so that a, or ideally, at least, so that a search committee can then be created to hire the new interim principal for Arms. Dr. Morris and Ms. Cunningham decided this principal, as you heard, will be needed to be hired for no less than two years. Dr. Morris affirmed to us that it is the goal to have this person hired by the last day of the school year. This means that there are about two to two and a half weeks to come up with a policy that will affect all students and teachers district-wide. Last Thursday, teachers raised the concern that this seemed to be a rushed process during an especially busy time of year for teachers. Dr. Morris pointed out that there's often no good time for such work. School's always busy, and it's true, there's always work to do, but think about it, the end of May, teachers at Arms are already working extra hard to facilitate the transition of their students to the next grade. facilitate the transition of their students to the next grade and the end-of-the-year planning that comes along with that. In the high school, many teachers will be busy giving exams and grading papers for seniors in time for the graduation in early June, and we're sure elementary school teachers are feeling the crunch, the end-of-the-year crunch as well. So, can this process be reconsidered? If an interim principal must be hired by June 21st, perhaps the process could follow past practice at the middle school, in which staff nominated and elected representatives to the interview committee. Then, a more thoughtful, inclusive, and less rushed process could start in the fall to evaluate current hiring practices and make recommendations for broad district-wide changes. If an interim were hired for a shorter term than two years, such policy changes could then go into effect to help us find a stable, long-term principal, such as many of the other schools have had for years. Thank you, and I'd like to enter this document into the record. You have the signatures.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing our voices tonight. We did not have a lot of time to prepare. Somebody said a couple of weeks, but honestly, it's been a couple of days, and I know that not everyone who wanted to join in our message had time to get involved. We would like to encourage you to continue to engage with us on this. We invite you to continue to ask us questions about ARMS and to celebrate the work of our students and to look for evidence of what is really happening there. We would like to share with you a piece of evidence. It's a typical piece, it's not an unusual artifact. It is a Bodie note, which is something that we get as staff daily from Dr. Bodie, from December 16th, 2016, and again, completely random sample. Bodie notes for staff, what are we learning today? There is an invitation to a party, a celebration for the season. There is a two-hour delay and a concern, don't worry, teachers, you're going to have your prep, okay? There's an awareness of contract here and teacher concern. There's a Family Diversity Projects Inquiry Group announcement, advisors, don't forget, schedule this date, more is coming to help you with this process. There is a note that because of the recent anti-Semitic activity that had happened post-election last year, that Patty had gone and met with the Jewish Community Center in Amherst and that she was reporting out that things went well, but she shares this, and I'm going to quote, "Continuing anti-bias work, please continue to engage our work with anti-bias curriculum and discussions. Please continue to share resources in our anti-bias curriculum folder," one that she created for us. "Please inform me about additional curriculum or extensions, expansions you are engaging. Students are reacting and responding in a wide range of ways, but what is clear is that we need to continue. In addition, expanding the fight to combat bias and oppression toward multiple affiliations, groups, and affirming all identities, I'm sorry, in addition to combating bias and oppression toward multiple affiliations, groups, and affirming all identities, we need to move forward with assertive training and active bystander skills." It goes on with some things we need to know, important dates. This is not unusual, it shows the work of what's happening at this school. If you want to know more about how and what ARMS students and staff have been doing under the leadership of Patty Bodie, you might look no further than gathering these notes from the last year and a half. They record and tell the story of a school that is doing its best to walk the walk and talk the talk of what is best for students, for our community, and our society. We do this proudly, we do this tirelessly, and we do this in debt and gratitude under the leadership of Dr. Bodie, and we want to talk to you more about it. I have to go off script here, based on what happened in your discussion, I just want to respond. A lot of people that they've been reacting in a couple of weeks that we've heard this news said, "I just want to stand up and say we need her." And I want to just say that I believe Dr. Nieto is correct. This decision warrants a creative solution and the possibility of reversal. This is going to be an important thing that I hope that you can discuss. Thank you.
My name is Eli Edinson. I currently teach math at Amherst Middle School. I'd just like to go on the record by saying that I think it's an absolute travesty that Patty Bodie is not at least being considered for the leadership position at Amherst Regional Middle School. I, I got a little note card here, just to make sure. Sorry. So, I do want to preface my comments by saying that I do understand that Patty is not currently licensed currently to be a principal in the state of Massachusetts, but I do want to say that I've been in a lot of schools and I've worked for a lot of administrators here in this district and in others. I've never even seen the license of my administrators. I don't even know if it existed, if they had one. Even if it did, it's a little piece of paper, it usually has your name and your birthday and your MPID, and that's about it. It says you're a good principal, but as much as a driver's license says that you're a good driver. It really doesn't. What does impress me is the body of work that that principal puts in and the way that they can cultivate relationships amongst the faculty, amongst the students, the way that they can inspire others to instill the beliefs and values that we say that we so cherish in our community, and the way that she can encourage us to continue that work in our classrooms, the way that, I got some other notes here, sorry. But that whole idea that she doesn't have a, it doesn't, it's really, that's not what's important here. I had a little anecdote that I wanted to do about something Patty did. For the sake of time, I'm not going to share, but basically, there was an incident of anti-Semitism in our school last year, and the response that Patty had was amazing, and it touched me as a Jewish educator in our school. It was empowering and it made me feel safe and supported, and it was something I never seen an administrator do, basically. And that doesn't happen in other schools, and it's important to know that. These are the things that we'll be missing if Patty is not part of our building. And I know that that was just one incident and it was targeted at a very small Jewish population of our school, but I will say that I've seen Patty do something either empowering or creative or inspiring, or she created awareness around the Latino and Hispanic students in our school. She's done something for the African-American students in our school, she's done something for the homeless students in our school, the LGBTQ students in our school, she did something for the ELL students, for the immigrant students, for, I mean, I could keep going here, but I think you're getting the picture. All she cares about is those kids, like, they're her own. She is an amazing person to work for. If she is not allowed to continue working in this building, I personally will be devastated, and I know that there's other people in this room that would be devastated as well. My last comment, so, Peter, you're a good man. I've had the pleasure of teaching two of your wonderful children. In my opinion, you were instrumental in bringing Patty into this district, and you did it for all the right reasons, and you did it because you were on board with the faculty and what we believed in, and we did it. I mean, lest we not forget where this building was two years ago, it was a disaster and people were miserable, and this is real. We have to go home to our families too at night, and it's very hard when those schools are in turmoil, and we've created something amazing here. Why would we blow that up now? It just seems insane to me. My last thing is, I did this for Patty, this is a little art analogy, you wouldn't take Van Gogh out of the art museum because he didn't have an art degree. You would figure out a way to keep that painting in the building.
Yes.
Hello, Steve.
Hello. My name's Steve Zekon Anderson. I've taught math at the middle school for 12 years, and in addition, I have a little other perspective from serving for three years on the school committee at the Frontier District. I know Frontier isn't Amherst, I get that, but, and actually, I'm going to squeeze a quick comment, and I appreciate Ben bringing up, and I really do want to reiterate that I feel it was, what I heard also was a misunderstanding of the emotions you heard from the teachers at that first meeting, because we were not, it was about a pastime, the healing had happened. The thing that happened at the school a few years ago had been healed, and so those were emotions of thanks for the people that had brought that on, so I just wanted to make that clear. It sounded like that was misunderstood. I'd like to share some additional perspective on Patty Bodie and the ARMS community, but I'd also ask you to hear what I'm saying as well as speaking to the qualities that I feel it's essential for a principal to have who's going to lead our community. As you're likely well aware, by having taught at ARMS over the last decade-plus, I've had the opportunity to work with quite a few administration teams. In the two years that Patty Bodie has been the principal of our school, I've had an experience that is completely unique during my time at the middle school, and that has been the opportunity to work for an administrator who I've felt truly inspired by, a principal who I've greatly appreciated learning from, and a leader who I have felt very confident to be led by. Patty has consistently shown that she understands how to lead a school community in a collaborative way that engages and involves everybody. She's a leader who understands when it's appropriate to make decisions that are hers alone to make, and also when and how to include stakeholders in a collaborative decision-making process. Whether meeting individually with Patty or attending a meeting with her along with colleagues, parents, or a student, Patty always truly listens to the feedback and comments of others and incorporates their thoughts and concerns into her consideration. As part of her leadership style, Patty consistently shows a deep respect for and interest in hearing a diversity of ideas and viewpoints. During my times at ARMS, I've also had the opportunity to serve on two different principal interview committees, not hiring committees. And in addition, I was involved in the evaluative processes of school leaders in my role on the Conway School Committee. As a result, I've seen many education professionals who have applied for or are working in a leadership position. I can say that during my time on the screening committees, I've not had the experience of advocating for a candidate as a must-have person, someone who I felt so strongly we should choose as our leader. Instead, honestly, I've been left with the experience of proposing a candidate who would merely be the acceptable choice from the pool that was left. In Patty Bodie, however, I have seen in action a professional who I can easily say I would have called a must-have as a principal candidate. Her vast experience in and clear commitment to social justice, equity, and multicultural education, and her demonstrated ability to lead a school community in a respectful and collaborative style are exactly the qualities that I would want in a principal for our middle school. Patty has truly walked the walk as well as talked the talk of what makes a great principal, and I can now only be hopeful that I'm able to say the same for the next person sitting in that office. Thank you.
So, I want to take just a moment, there are a couple, there are a few more names, and obviously, as I mentioned before, I'm going to keep letting people come up and speak as long as they want. But earlier, when I talked about the ground rules that we have as policy that are grounded, I think, in good ethics as well as also, to some extent, the law, there's, it's an interesting phrase, you're not allowed to pick out individuals for complaints or criticisms, but there's nothing actually in the rules that prevent you from praising people. And I say that, I mean, this is actually kind of important. I'm not, I'm saying this because it's important, because I have no idea what anyone wants to say next who comes up here, and I need to say now, before we continue, that the ground rules that I mentioned earlier are still in place, and that may not feel fair to some members of the public if I've sat here as chair and allowed a lot of, you know, very nice things to be said, and then I'm going to wield a heavy gavel if anyone comes up to what they might naturally consider to be an alternative viewpoint that as a member of the community, they have a right to possess. And so I'm saying this now because the ground rules are in fact in effect, and they're in effect because they need to be as an ethically-bound, as well as legally-bound, school committee. So, and I have literally no idea what anyone wants to say who comes up next, there may not be anything like that, but I really felt the need to reiterate that because I'm going to gavel the living heck if I feel like we're crossing in lines that we shouldn't, and you just need to know that now, that it's not either personally or to prevent any freedom of speech, it's really because the rules of our body, as a public body, are bounded by law and bounded by our ethical obligations. Having said that, again, as I said, I have no idea what anyone wants to say next. So, my next person on here is Norman Price.
So, first of all, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak and your service to our children and our community. I have only the slightest idea of the challenges you all face sitting in those seats. I am so fortunate to work with you, this thoughtful and courageous leadership of the school committee, Dr. Morris, my awesome colleagues, and our remarkable students and families, so it's from a place of deep gratitude that I stand here today with a few observations. So, Dr. Bodie and I came to the middle school about 27 years ago. As an art teacher, I mean, I could go on and on, of course, about that, but as an art teacher, Patty made great things happen every day. We all looked to her as a leader in multicultural education. She brought theory to life for our students and our school. So, flash forward two years ago, I was extremely optimistic, she would bring, she would be a visionary leader who could take theory and bring it to life in our community, and as you can hear, people think that's been happening. So, as also apparent, we have a fantastic faculty at the middle school. It's, you know, in science, you use analogies sometimes, right? To try, I'm a science teacher at the middle school, and so if you have an analogy, it's sort of like we're in a giant boat full of very, very strong rowers, and we can make the school move, and we do. But we are better when we have a great coach, a coxswain, a captain who rows along with us, and we have this with Mrs. Bodie or Dr. Bodie. And as you probably know, finding a principal with this talent is so difficult. I mean, if you've seen her resume, this doesn't happen. In my opinion, someone like her comes around every 25 years, if you are lucky. Some schools never will get a principal like this. So, we may not have this chance again. So, my question is, will this district, this town, who values multicultural education, be creative enough to see this as a staff development issue, this licensure issue? The state changes gears every other frickin' week. They switch from Nickelby to ESA, the rules change, the website's down, all of these things happen over the course of this two-year period. Will we bend over backwards, as we should, to keep this outstanding person in place? We obviously face, we all do, as a district, because we've seen what can happen as a district. We face political and bureaucratic challenges to this. But when I look around at you folks and our leadership team, I have to believe we have the courage, the brains, and the political savvy at the state level to figure this out, to solve this puzzle. It's a bureaucratic and political challenge, it's a puzzle, but I think together, if we put our minds together, we can find a solution that will keep an amazing person in place. Thank you.
I'm Sue Tippett. I'm the school adjustment counselor at the middle school. I've worked for the Amherst Regional School System since 1994, which means I've served under more than 12 principals. I was going to get up here and tell you how wonderful Patty is, but everybody has said it, so I just want to add one other thing in honor of not wasting time, which is that I think the principal hiring process at the district level has been broken for a long time, long before you all were here. I have worked under an alcoholic pedophile, I have worked under people who were fired. I know families didn't experience this, but we started the middle school one year with no schedules. Kids were in-- Kids were in with teachers for six hours. We didn't, because the principal had refused to listen to people about making schedules. She was gone by the end of September. We have had incredible upheaval and difficulties, not just at the middle school, but at the high school. This hiring problem cannot be corrected in a month. This needs a really, really thoughtful process. It is difficult to find an incredibly, a person who has everything that we need for the principal. What we need is a person who has a passion to be a principal, because in Amherst, it's incredibly challenging to be a principal. We need someone who has the skills to be a principal, and we need someone who has tremendous commitment to social justice and ability to actualize that commitment. We have all those things in Patty Bodie. With creativity, you can legally keep Patty Bodie. She can be teacher in charge of the school. Schools do that when there isn't a licensed principal. She could be co-principal with some other staff person. We have staff people who have principal licenseships, who are willing to be co-principal with her. There are ways to keep Patty Bodie. As Dr. Price said, she is a gem. We will not find another one, and we will not solve this in a month. Thank you.
Trying to talk quick. First, it's an honor to be in a room with so many of what I consider the noblest professionaries, teachers. I've been a teacher. I'll also say it's an honor, Steve, to be in a room with a former school committee It is very important that teachers' voices be heard, and it's very important also to hear the institutional knowledge of what has happened before. I've come to bring some of that institutional knowledge as well, although not as far back as 12 years, so I appreciate that. A lot of people are here describing with good measure and good reason the reasons why Patty Bodie is a good principal. But I personally don't find fault with that second of Dr. Morris's decisions, but more so with the first. To me, it is, at least as egregious for different reasons, that, not that Patty Bodie isn't the principal, but that we won't have a principal until, you know, next year. To me, that is the issue. So what I want to describe is, in all my time in public service, and the point that everybody's here is that it's always in the best interest of the community for public education to have public people involved in it. As such, on the school committee, and I've said this before, we spent plenty of time debating and deliberating and getting it to the point that the administration can be responsive to the community. That was the inception of the School Equity Task Force. We spent many other deliberations and debates making sure that we can have a position like Ms. Cunningham's position. So, to have a hiring process that involves a search committee, I definitely echo what you're describing, that our hiring processes here have been askew for a long, long time. And I would humbly suggest, you know, because I have been part of the continuum of this, that what we're describing in terms of fixing a process has to come through, I hope you don't knock me down, Chair, what I'm criticizing is the school committee. The school committee has to make this process. So even if Dr. Morris and Ms. Cunningham get a committee together in the next couple of weeks, it's not in their jurisdiction or authority to decide this is the way it should go forward so everybody is comfortable with their involvement in the process. It's up to each and every one of you solemn members of the community elected to represent for a public school system. Until and unless that happens, oh, and I also want to acknowledge, this is, you know, good stuff, I want to acknowledge Dr. Morris, and this is praise with a backhanded slap, praise for taking the, on your shoulders, the critique and the criticism of sitting in this gauntlet. I know people with lesser character wouldn't do it. This is not about whether Patty Bodie is a great principal. Many people would say she is. This is about whether or not the leadership in the district, that's you, school committee people, and the superintendent can put together a process that can demonstrate that people have a say in what's going to happen in the community. The reason we're at this juncture is that enough people feel like they thought they had a say, and the superintendent can decide, no, you don't, I'm going to do something else for reasons that I doubt anybody here could articulate. So that is the issue, and that's not, so my point is that speaking about Patty Bodie is kind of tangential to where we are in the district and where we've been for a very long, long time. The final thing I want to say, diversity and our questions about diversity are also secondary to it. I've been in many of conversations about diversity in our district, and many people describe diversity in different ways. Our conversation has never been about, historically, about the number of paraeducators or clerical staff we hire for the sake of having numbers. It has always been about the lived experience of not just people of color in the community, but everybody in the community. When young white children grow up and don't see a person of authority that is of a different background, they go into the world disabled. We've always been arguing and debating and discussing how best to get positions of leadership filled with diversity of thought, diversity of geography, diversity of people. And I don't want to argue whether or not one person is good for it or not, I want to argue whether or not a process is in place to make that happen. And I think we're chasing red herrings when we do anything less than that. So, thank you for allowing me to speak. I think I did do this.
So, the names on the sheets that were submitted have been exhausted. If there's anyone who'd like to speak, they can come forward to the microphone. Please identify yourself, you have three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Heather Sullivan Flynn, proud teacher at the middle school and the parent of a child who will be at the middle school next year. I would urge the school committee to slow down this process. The one mistake that we can make right now is to put a permanent person in place July 1st. Clearly, the middle school is ready to work with the school committee, with the town, on our leadership and on the future of our school. Let's not make a decision based on having someone in place quickly as of July 1st. It's an unreasonable timetable. And even in future considerations, like if we're consolidating with the high school or elementary schools, these are all secondary issues to taking the time to have a dialogue and to have a process that's going to work. And I think that July 1st is too quick for that. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? I've got to wait a second, because sometimes people don't. There you go. See? See, I'm about to close it off, and then you're like, no, wait!
First, let me apologize, I stutter. I'm one of the two co-assisting principals at Amherst Regional Middle School, David Rainan. I am about to finish my 38th year in our school district. Over those 38 years, I spent the first 15 years working under one principal. For the last 23 years, I've worked under approximately nine principals. If I count my years as K-12 performing arts coordinator and count high school, elementary principals, many more. I've worked under approximately nine superintendents. For many people, there was a time in our school district where we had the term B-A-M-S-S, BAMS, and BAMS goals. I don't know how many people even realize what that stands for, and I'm not going to say what it stands for, you can go look it up. I think it's important because it's history of our school district, and you should know that. However, I will say this, I have spent the last two years working with two individuals, not just one individual, but two individuals, Alicia as well as Patty, who are BAMS, who live BAMS, who have brought BAMS to every aspect of our school. When BAMS first started, I had the honor of taking the very first BAMS class with Beverly Tatum. It was a wonderful class, she's an incredible professor. I then went on to take Part II of BAMS, and then our school district, in a way, kept that acronym as nothing more than a figurehead. And over the last few years, we've really tried to work very hard at getting that back. We're a school district that likes to say that we honor culture, we honor diversity, we honor equity, and yet I see two individuals that I have worked with, as well as taught with, as well as who've known both of my kids who went through our school district, who are BAMS. And I do want you to really consider whether or not you want to lose that. I also want you to really consider, are you going to end a school year without the middle school faculty and staff not knowing who they will be working for and with come September? That would be a real travesty. Will it matter to me? It will matter to me because I've spent 38 years in the school district. Will it matter to me September 1st, when it's time to walk into the building? No, it won't, because I'm not walking into the building, I'm retiring. And I can say that I've spent the last two years of my career here working with two of the most incredibly dedicated individuals I have ever met. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak?
So, my name is Nikki Affey, principal of Wildwood. So, first of all, I just want to say, Mike, Doreen, you know, I totally respect and feel very grateful for working with you. So I just want to put that out and allow me to be the kind of principal that I aspire to be. But if I didn't speak, I would feel like I couldn't live with myself, really. My father always said to be a mensch, so this is my attempt to be a mensch, for those of you that know Yiddish. I couldn't speak, because I don't know if this would be my last chance to say something about Patty. So when I became a principal 14 years ago, I, you know, I had been through seven principals in my time at Mark's Meadow. When I looked for a mentor or someone to talk to, it was Patty, who was the art teacher at the middle school and working with turning points. So I feel like this is my opportunity to say thank you to Patty. And then when she came to the district, I thought, this is it, you know, this is a keeper, this is somebody who's just right, so dedicated, and I saw the effect on all the staff, on the parents, and the kids. And I'm really thankful, you know, that what she did heal the school, I mean, she did work with everybody. And for me, as a principal, I know how important it is to inspire our staff. And so she's really inspired staff, and that you galvanize in all this energy, and it's not easy to do for the greater good. So I just want to put that out there, I know how complicated the situation is, but I'm still in a sense of feeling of loss and sadness, and sadness for the community, for our kids. I know as a community, we will strive to do the best, and I, as I said, but I'm still hoping, beyond hope, you know, that something can be done too, because the healing's already begun to move us forward, you know, but I don't know if it can be done. So, I just wanted to say thank you to Patty for all you've given, so thank you.
So, I'm Ginny Hamilton. I'm a parent of a third grader, so an aspiring middle schooler, which actually more inspires fright rather than excitement, except sitting in this room tonight. Hearing teachers talk about the work that they're doing at the middle school and the kind of education my son will hopefully get there in a few years reminds me that that's the reason we moved to this town, to participate in this town, to provide our son with an education that's top-quality academics and focused in social justice. The second point I want to make is professionally, I do work as a healer, and teaching people how to heal themselves through movement and through body work. And so hearing the talk of healing needed tonight, it's important to realize that healing happens through movement. When we spend time thinking that we can just sit and rest for too long, we actually lose health rather than gaining health. And what I'm hearing from teachers in this room tonight and from others who are speaking is about the need to keep moving, but to keep moving slowly, to keep moving in a way that gives us a chance to hold on to what's good and what's working and what's inspiring, and to find the creative solutions that deal with a very real legal issue that's here. So I echo what was said earlier of seeing if there's a way to find a creative legal solution for the short term, and to move more slowly so that we can keep the growth and the goodness that's existing at the middle school right now, at least for six more years, please.
Are there any?
Hi, I'm Deb Leonard. I don't public speak, I apologize, but lots of people have been crying, so if I sound strange, that's okay. Middle school, junior high school, nobody looks forward to it, right? It's just not the kind of experience, our kids are only there for two years, what's the big deal? It's a big deal now, it's a good place now. For a long time, it hasn't been. Let's see if we can hold on to it legally and spiritually.
I'm Jennifer Wellmeyer, I teach science at the middle school. Thank you for your time and efforts to think about what we're sharing with you. I want to share with you part of a private letter that I sent to Patty Bodie, and it took me a while to come up with it, but I do have perspective with Dave. I think I might be second in line with the oldest person there. I have makeup on, but, you know, whatever. So, you know, people have talked about what she's done for the last two years, and I just wanted to comment on the concept of putting something on a resume and, you know, to kind of gain, you know, credibility. Thank you, Dr. Hinkle. So I said to Patty, "I have known you, of you and your work for over 25 years, and I have admired your boundless energy, creativity, and commitment to doing what is right and not feeding your ego. In many ways, you have been a role model to me. Here is another story which I am sure you don't know about. When I was working in East Longmeadow," so this is 1993, "Martha Jenkins and I would commute together sometimes, she told me about you and your hand painting activity. Around that time, I had been reading The Mismeasure of Man by Stephen J. Gold, which is a book about scientific racism. I was developing the early beginnings of my science unit on scientific racism and race as a social construct. Martha and I developed a quote-unquote retired, required elective at the middle school called Beneath the Surface, which included many of the activities and topics that I have later used in my science unit, which I also teach teachers in the summer, and so they're informed of this practice, science teachers of my unit on scientific racism. Every kid at the school had to take the elective. Berchley Park was largely white with a few Metco students from Springfield. The course got a lot of publicity, and I was awarded the Anti-Defamation League's World of Difference Teacher Incentive Award for that course and the unit that I developed on scientific racism. I am proud of that award more than any other I have ever received. And I can truly say that it was your hand painting activity that was the thing that started it all. At the time, I didn't even know what you looked like. Fast forward, and I get hired to work the middle school, and then I get to see you in action and watch how everything you do, and did and do with your boundless energy is for the good of your colleagues and the children you teach. I feel additionally grateful that my daughter was able to go to DASAC, which is another thing that she established. So when I heard of your appointment, I knew that nothing but goodness could come from it. The staff and me were starving for goodness. Thank you."
So, we're probably getting to near the end of the public comment section. I want to give people a last chance, if you have something you want to say. Don't feel the urge if you don't want to, but I also know that once we close it off, we're closing it off, so I wanted to make sure if anyone had anything they wanted to say, they were able to and didn't feel.
Hi, my name is Wendy Affey, and I am a recently retired Amherst preschool educator.
And this reminds me a little bit of Horton Here's a Who. I don't know if you remember that book, but having worked with little kids, and that's I don't know if you remember that book, but having worked with little kids, and that's what I feel like right now, a little bit, where I just say, "Dig deep! Do something! You have the incredible brilliance amongst all of you to do something, to find an answer, to dig deep and save the diamond.
Public comment section is over. Are there announcements? I'm underlining that word, because it's not debate or comment. Are there any announcements from the school committee? Sir, how many?
CPAC would like to share with the community that they are open for nominations for STARS, which is the annual recognition of any community member, staff, student, who we wish to recognize, anyone wishes to recognize, their work in special education. Instead of me reciting the Google URL, it's probably easiest just to email CPAC@Arps.org, and they'll shoot you the form, so that's, you know, affects a lot of students, so if you know of anybody, please send that along.
Thank you very much. Any further announcements? Yes, so.
I'd just like to thank Mr. Beckhold again, and congratulate him on his Sammy, because I was remiss, when he was standing in front of us, to congratulate him in person, and I'm sorry for that, and congratulations.
Okay, any further? Seeing none. Subcommittee updates, and this is a voluntary basis, for those who have updates. Ms. Marriott.
I just wanted to mention some work of the policy subcommittee. We, Ms. Cunningham came to us and brought us the idea of creating a policy around, kind of the work that the HR department is doing, to provide opportunities for staff all across the district to further their careers in the district, you know, supporting that. And so, her thought was that we might consider crafting a policy to kind of support that work, or affirm it in some way. So, I just kind of wanted to give the committee a heads-up, that that's in the works, and if anyone has any thoughts, they'd be welcome.
Superintendent's update.
I'll try to be brief, I do have a number of items, though, so I'll pace myself. First thing I want to note, is I believe this is Ms. Marriott's last meeting, if I'm remembering that correctly. Last regional meeting. I think I'm sneaking one more last-minute Pelham meeting in, but I'll speak to the region. Seems the way that school comm members go out, with these like, one-item, quick vote, you know, having some Amherst members as well, sorry, that's an aside, but I just want to appreciate Ms. Marriott's work, both from the Pelham and the Regional Committee. Echo something I've said about some other departing members, as I entered, having your institutional knowledge, memory, and to be a trusted voice, where I could connect with you about a number of issues, you'd bring things to me. I really appreciated the dialogue we've had, both in the public meetings, but in particular in terms of the other dialogue that sometimes happens between school comm members and superintendents, so I really want to honor and recognize your service.
Thanks.
I think before I go on, there's a hand.
Sir, how many?
I just wanted to quickly echo that, and that I have the fortunate opportunity to continue to work with Ms. Marriott, at the elementary level, and the regional school district planning board. I just wanted to also say, you know, one thing I really appreciated about her contributions, the signal-to-noise ratio in her comments has always been like, as high as anybody I hear at a public forum, and, you know, it's always so very thoughtful, and things I've, you know, not thought of before, so I just really appreciate her contributions.
She is the best. I mean, we actually have evidence further down here, on the superintendent evaluation tool. We have like, more, we're not done yet, there's more cool stuff.
So, one thing that's not written in here, the update's in the packet, for those of you who are looking for it, it's not a separate document, like it sometimes is. So, three of the four town meetings have occurred, both starting in Leverett, and then Chutesbury, where Mr. Dinsmore made incredibly powerful comments, should I let him know? And it's not a joke, it's not meant to be funny, I know you laugh, because you're embarrassed to get compliments, but it really was powerful for me, and he was speaking more to the elementary school in his town than he was the secondary, but just the level of coherence in his comment and depth was extraordinary. And then, Amherst last night. So, three of the four towns have passed both the assessment method and the overall budget. Pelham Town Meeting is on Saturday, as I have been, I'll update the committee, there's Wi-Fi in Pelham, so I'll update the committee from, hopefully from that meeting, to know that it's gone around.
Sir, Dinsmore's comments were actually reported in the Daily Hampshire Gazette, and they were really impressive, but also, more importantly, if you didn't see them, you can actually go find them, and see for yourself that they were terrific.
Absolutely. So, you know, we'll update after Pelham, and then we will hopefully have a budget passed, with all four towns in agreement, so that is good news. I'm going to skip around a bit, I do want to mention the Facebook page the district has started, because I think it's worth visiting, and I want to say that out loud, and we've had some good initial feedback, and made some adaptations to what people would like to see on that site, but it's, if we go back to the communication plan that was presented a couple, quite a few months ago, that was one of the goals for the spring, was to get that up and running. Again, I'm going to skip around one important, National Teachers Week is this week, as I announced in Friday's newsletter. I want to acknowledge our exceptionally talented, dedicated teachers, and while it's technically teachers, I want to acknowledge that we have many people who don't have the title of teacher, and actively teach our students, and that includes our educators, clerical staff, custodial staff, food service staff, who are actively educating about healthy foods, and so, we have, I want to both acknowledge the people with the formal titles of teachers, and also acknowledge that, and celebrate that we have such a strong staff, beyond the formal title, who do incredible teaching for our students every day, and it's an incredibly hard job, and it's worth noting that. Going down to the regional specific updates, happy to report that the middle school has been, we have the VELA program, and as you know, which was positive for our budget process this year, that VELA grant that we received is continuing, or has been renewed, which is a competitive process. In another competitive process, we got an additional grant by the collaborative who supports the VELA program with us, for a summer program, so that the students who are part of the VELA program during the school year have access to ongoing academic and social support throughout the summer as well, which is great news. Middle school students have been working on a food drive, if you've been in the middle school, you might notice under the immigration signs, which I'll talk about in a second, that the Leo Club has been sponsoring a food drive with little boxes, so it's actually this wonderful potpourri of different things going on, when you walk into the middle school right now. Thursday, which is two days from now, our high school has the privilege of welcoming back a graduate, and a World War II veteran, and Pearl Harbor survivor. There's an optional assembly for all students and staff during P-period on Thursday in the auditorium, and the times there, if anyone is interested from the committee, you're certainly welcome to hear that. I'm sure it'll be an incredible talk, he will be receiving it, I'll already give you the mask the following day. And, I'm not skipping, it's not important, I'm just going to mention Consent Week, which was a while ago, which is where it got on the update, it's an important topic, and perhaps one worth coming back to, as we address student identity. Immigration stories, which you will see in the lobby, just want to note that on May 15th, in the evening, at the Arms Lobby, that's going to be the official reception, everyone is welcome. And one of the things we chose to do at our administrative team meeting last week, we've been sitting down for about an hour and three-quarters, which I know, at this moment, may sound familiar to you all, and we got up and just walked with our administrative team to see the immigration exhibit, and it really is worth, if you're not typically in the middle school, some people mentioned that earlier, taking a walk over, because it's really, it's an incredible project, and thank you to AEF, the Amherst Education Foundation, for supporting that. Two other pieces, well, we'll talk more about the climate surveys in a short while, but as you know, we discussed here, that School Climate Task Force, particularly former school comm member Rick Hood, discussed at length the importance, and we agree with them on school climate surveys. And while it's a different instrument that was used, some of the questions remain the same, and both Mr. Jackson, myself, and high school faculty, were, it's incredibly heartening to see the difference between questions asked in 2015 and 2018. About three questions that, you know, I've talked about here, right, none of this is a surprise, teachers treat me with respect. School's a place where I feel safe, and I know an adult at school I can talk to if I need, if I need support or need help. And so, the first chart has the aggregate results, and you can see in all three, there's a pretty significant uptick in responses, and the N-size, for instance, the survey was 700. So, it's not like an optional survey that kids can fill out at lunch, it was done during an advisory period. The second survey, because this was a major cause of concern in 2015, was African-American student responses, and you could see the incredible difference between 2015 and 2018. And the last slide shows the differences in Latino/Latina responses, you can also see the significant difference. So, the really good news of these three questions or prompts, were that all the scores went up in the aggregate, and the achievement graph essentially shrunk statistically in significant margins. So, the last thing I'll say on this, because we'll talk about it more in further meetings, I hope we leave that in, is that the high school, I really appreciate Mr. Jackson's not here anymore, I know he went to the Fields Meeting, so he was double-booked, the high school is not using it, yes, they're patting themselves on the shoulder, as they should, but they're actively digging into what is the difference? Why are the results so different from 2018 to 2015? And using it from an inquiry approach, as well as celebration, but really focusing the inquiry piece, so that they can start identifying, what did we do differently? Who's different on the staff? What programs are we doing differently? So, they can actively learn and investigate, and understand better what the, why there's such a stark difference in the results of the student, the school climate survey that was offered to students. So, I just want to, he's not here, but I want to publicly appreciate the leadership, it would have been easy to stay just with the celebration mode, and acknowledgement mode of the work, and they're, did that, and they're going straight in with the leadership, of leadership team, teaching and learning, leadership is what they call it at the high school, as well as the whole faculty, to understand better what's different now, so they can build on that to make continued improvements in the future.
Nice question on that.
Yeah, please.
So, 2015 to 2018, does that mean there is any overlap in, there would be some overlap in students, right, because this is all, the whole secondary level? I'm just wondering, I'm, I'm just anonymous, but if there's any way to connect individuals who filled it out both times, and see if their scores changed?
So, one of the prompts that we can disaggregate by is by grade level. Since we didn't own the 2015 data, it was done by an outside vendor, we have some of that, we don't have full data, but we, you know, one of the things that I know Mr. Jackson's doing is actively disaggregating by multiple variables, I shared three questions with three disaggregate, or two disaggregations, I should say, but the nice thing about owning the data is we can do as many disaggregations as we want, and it, the system's pretty facile to work, rather than working with Ms. Gramacki and Mr. Jackson on just the technical parts of that.
I don't think we talked about this yet, but I mean, is there, your intention to have a schedule soon, a deeper agenda? Because I don't want to, the accident would be, we start digging into questions about the school climate survey now, and we actually haven't seen a full presentation, or been able to look through it. Are we going to do that soon?
I'd be very memorable to them. It's the will of the committee, so.
Is it the will of the committee that we talk about that more? Looking for nodded heads?
Very interested in that.
Okay, great, it is the will of the committee, apparently.
And the last two things I'll just share are flyers that this Friday night, everyone's welcome to Latino Achievement Awards, the 12th Annual, it's at the middle school auditorium, it's family-friendly, I'll be there with at least one of my kids, probably dragging both of them. Not dragging my son, he's super excited. He's watching, hopefully he's asleep, he's like, "Oh my God, I liked that last year, the stand." Yeah, he's super into it, and my daughter is into it as well, so, he's the wrong verb. And, and the Black Scholars Rising is on May 18th, and also at 6 o'clock, and both are open to all families in the community, and all school comm members, so really nice, fun events, they bring families together, and especially at this time of year, where we have lots of different events. The feedback we continue to hear, and one of the reasons we continue to have the events is not for show, is because families look forward to the events each year, as a celebration of the getting towards the end of the school year, as well as the kind of affirmation of affinity groups within our community. So, everyone is welcome.
Are there questions for the superintendent? Any questions? So, next, moving to the chair's report thing, so, I think the next, next meeting we reorganize?
Yes, assuming, no, probably the, I'm sorry, mind if I speak to it?
I'm asking you to speak to it.
Yeah, well, I didn't, I was.
I was just making faces.
So, Pelham has their election a week from tonight, but the new school comm member won't be seated until the first Pelham meeting, which is after the next regional meeting. So, it likely will be the first June regional meeting that that, because Pelham has to meet to reorganize, not just because as a new member, but just they reorganize in general, that means they redraw rounds.
That makes total sense. Okay, so, this is probably not as germane now, but I was hoping that as prep work for that reorganization, that we redistribute all the subcommittees, a list of all of them, and then we probably need to update them, because we have, we have an informal advocacy group, it's not formally identified, but I don't want it to be a secret, either, where people don't know that exists, if they're new. The list I saw most recently, that I was able to find, didn't include like JCPC or the budget, but I think my guess is we have one that's broader, because what I'd like to do is, I'd like to distribute it to all, to all the members of the current committee. Obviously, we'll make sure we do it whenever there are new members appointed, so that they have it in advance, and then, my, my advice to the future chair, whoever that is, including if it's me, my advice to them would be that what we've done in the past is sort of a cattle call, where we throw out a whole bunch of names of subcommittees, and people throw up their hands to see which one they want to be on, and so, some might be popular, some might be unpopular. I don't think that's a really great way to do it. What I'd really rather do is move to something like where people submit, you know, the Deb Westmoreland or something like that, a couple of committees it'd like to be on, and then, my advice to the future chair would be that they sit down with the future vice chair, and sort through all these things, and sort of see if there's a natural alignment, and then come back to the committee and discuss it afterwards, so that we can just have a more, what I'd hope would be a more rational process. And that's my chair's report. As good as I can do. We have school committee planning later, so, undoubtedly, both the discussion we had today, or anything else, might engender other topics we want to talk about, but that's at the end of the agenda, so we'll get to it when we get to it. Anyone want a two-minute break?
Yes.
All right, so, probably it's going to be more like a five-minute break, but we'll take a break.
I also showed this contract, which was a five-year contract. But the last two years of the five-year contract are technically option years. So it requires the school committee to vote to extend the option essentially to the busing companies. So you can see what our costs have been. Our transportation costs have actually improved between the last contract and this contract. We found some efficiencies in our routes due to enrollment drops. And so underneath the pricing for each contract, you'll see a bus cost per day. That's how we compare ourselves sort of to other districts. So for FY19, this is what the cost would be for the district. The contract is based on, the annual increases to the contractor are based on inflation from the prior calendar year that's been completed. So we know exactly what our costs are going to be for next year. So those, the FY19 rates here, that is what our costs would be. And so you can see the 302 for Five Star for the Amherst routes, same thing for Pelham because they give the same rate for Amherst and Pelham. Because Meskis does Lever and Shute's Berry, that's at 339. Those routes are a little longer with fewer kids, so it's a little more expensive. But those are very good rates. There's a survey of other school districts and what their bus cost per day, and they're generally between 300 and 450. And sort of the median, I'd say, is in like the 350 to 375 range. So our rates are pretty good. And just in general, around sort of bus procurements, it's a real challenge in the state right now. There's not a lot of busing companies that are competing for routes. The last two times that we've done this, we had the same two vendors, and they both were the low on the same group of routes, the low bid on the same group of routes. So there's not a lot of competition in this area. We try, as a group of business managers, we try to meet to figure out ways to make transportation more appealing out here and to get more companies to kind of enter this pool. You know, we consider sort of combining, you know, doing sort of a joint bid among several districts to see if that'll do it. But that's still sort of in discussion. So, yeah, the discussion tonight is around the contract. If you have any questions, and the next time I'd ask you to vote to extend the contract for FY19, and then next year, probably another vote to extend it for FY20, if the contract still looks good.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Every weekday at 8:30, the Pelham school bus crosses my driveway, and I wave to an empty bus.
Yeah.
Is there any way, and I guess you have to have the bus, but is there any way we could have a smaller and less costly bus?
So do you know when it passes your driveway, if it's where on the route it is?
Oh, it's near the end.
Yeah. So Pelham is sort of, it's a little more difficult. We can put in, when we do bids, for smaller buses. It doesn't make a huge impact on the price. When they bid the busing prices, they sort of amortize the cost of the vehicle over three to five years, depending on the length of the contract. So most of that cost is for the driver. But we can certainly, you know, see if we can lower the cost by getting a smaller vehicle.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Well, I have just a similar comment, that my bus, I live in Leverett, my bus, on the way to school is very full, but on the way back, it generally has about five people in it. And so I was just wondering, well, does that factor into the calculation that there's some different number of people there and back?
Yeah. I think I'll, at some point, maybe Jim will come and speak more specifically about transportation, but that's a challenge a lot of districts have, and it has to do with after-school sports and clubs. A lot of kids take the bus to school, but they stay for after-school clubs and sports. So we can't, we can't assume that they'll never take the bus if they, we kind of have a spot for them. And sometimes they may take the bus, most of the time they probably don't. But it is a challenge to try to use the buses efficiently while also not assuming a kid won't need the bus that day. So it is a challenge, especially in sort of rural towns where, you know, there aren't many kids on that bus, to begin with.
Mr. Dinsmore?
I just have a question kind of about the process with the contract going forward. Sure. So the vote to approve, to approve the existing contract for another year, and then again, next year for another year.
Yeah.
And then after that, you would have to negotiate a new contract.
Yeah, so what we do is, after that, we would do a new bus procurement. So we put together, we look at our routes, again, we see what we can consolidate. We put it out there. We reach out to as many transportation companies as we can to get them to bid on the transportation. And we're very happy with our current vendors, so I don't want to make it seem like we're trying to get competition because we're not happy. We're very happy with our current vendors. But we do try to get it just better for everybody when there's more competition around that. So we'll send it out to as many people as we can, and we do an invitation for bid, which is the lowest price. And the reason we have to bussing companies is because we structure it. We do one bid for all these routes, but we structure it so individual vendors can win groups of routes, and we select the overall lowest-cost package. So if Five Star, for example, submitted the lowest price for both the Amherst routes and the Lever Shute's Berry routes, they could theoretically have both. But it doesn't usually work out that way. Usually, one company will have lower rates for those towns, another company will have lower rates for Amherst and Pelham, and so we kind of split the contract that way.
Spencer?
Just one informational question. Does the, I guess, greenness of the companies factor in at all? Do we consider whether or not, the type of the vehicles, if they're hybrids or if they're...
Oh, that green is...
Yeah.
I'm thinking like new companies.
No, no, sorry. Environmentally, the environmental practices of the company.
So the, one of the reasons why most transportation contracts are for five years is because the procurements are really involved. And so when we get to that point, we'll update our specs. And so it could be something that plays into when we update our specs, if there is a desire to try to green our busing fleet. It's maybe a good opportunity for Mr. Sullivan to ask a question. Because we have had some experience with a green bus, an electric bus, and it's, maybe I'll just talk, speak to your question now? He asked me a question before the meeting.
No, no, hold on. He's got to ask the question.
Okay, go ahead.
You can't just answer a question.
Related to that, to that point, yeah.
I noticed when I pulled up to my parking spot over on the corner of the school, that our electric bus is once again parked in front of the shop.
Yeah.
Is there a reason for that?
Sure, so I'll speak to that. So for those who weren't on the committee back then, we received a grant to buy an electric school bus. They're about four times the price of a regular school bus, which is about 325,000. However, there's like a wave of hybrid electric buses that are more cost-effective. So that, this is a fully-electric bus that was built to be electric. It's not like a diesel bus that was converted to be electric. So we've had some ups and downs with it. It's sometimes really great, but we've had some part weird part breakdowns that really sidelined the bus for a while because it's not like our technician can just go ahead and fix it. It's a sort of a unique skill set to fix an electric school bus, and the parts aren't parts that you just pull out of a diesel bus and pop in. They're like high-tech conversion things that Bill Glucksmann, who's our busing coordinator, busing fleet manager, could probably come and speak to more sort of what the problems are. But we've had numerous breakdowns as of late, and we've been in conversations with Elian, which is the company who provides the electric bus, to try to get extended warranties. Because right now, our warranty's about up. We've had the bus for about a year and a half to two years, and so our original warranty's about up on the bus. And so there's a lot of conversations going around, not only with the state and with Elian, around, you know, we've got this bus, it's paid for by a grant, but if it's going to be a huge cost to us to keep replacing parts, and they're very expensive parts, at what point do we say, you know, we can't continue using this bus, unfortunately? And so we're not at that point yet where we're going to say that. We're still working with Elian to see if we can get an extended warranty, and we're hopeful that they'll do that. And we'll go from there. But so, in general, back to your question, I think we will want to review what we want to do with that. We try to use newer buses, more fuel-efficient buses in general. We don't let them have, the vendors provide buses that are more than seven years old. I know some districts go longer than that. And usually, when you do a new contract, you could get sort of a fresh wave of buses that they then amortize over the life of the contract. But that'll be part of the spec process.
Can I ask a question for you, Ms. Dinsmore? Forgive me, because we must have done this last year, and so I've been just forgetting. So we have a five-year contract. We're going to go out to bid soon. What are we voting on?
So...
Like, or put differently, why are we voting to affirm a contract we already have that doesn't expire for another couple of years?
So the way the contracts are structured is that the original award is for three base years.
Okay.
And the two option years have to be affirmed when you get to those option years. So we're actually approaching the first option year.
Ah!
That's why we're...
You didn't say that earlier.
Sorry.
This is important information, really?
I said it a different way, so...
By the way, on behalf of Mr. Demling, again, it's a great thing to have you here. I don't know how I missed that. Forgive me.
Well, I think Ms. Dinsmore... Oh, Ms. Dinsmore?
Just considered the precept with respect to the electric bus. Leadership has its price.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right. We've kind of, we've made that argument with the state, like, you know, we did a pilot. We've kind of, in addition to the breakdowns, you know, there's just a lot of work that goes along with the, not the price of the parts, but the price to get it fixed and, you know, try to troubleshoot it and get it back on the road and really spearhead it. And our, Bill Glucksmann, who I mentioned before, has gone above and beyond in terms of, he's gone and done speaking engagements on this bus to try to, you know, share knowledge with other communities. So we've really invested a lot of time, and we want the bus to work. So, you know, that's why we're really working hard to try to find a compromise where we can keep the bus going. But you're right, it's a pilot program is, that's why you do it. It's difficult.
So in the interest of the time, is there any, oh, is there others?
This is just a very quick comment. I'm going to take advantage, which I don't usually do with this little soapbox that we have here. But Mr. Demling and I have been in conversation with some of our statewide representatives around regional transportation. And so I'm looking at these numbers, and I'm doing the calculations in my head because I'm thinking to myself that we don't nearly get the kind of reimbursement that we should be getting, and these prices would definitely come down if we had that kind of, if the state was actually fulfilling its promise. And this year, I think, it seems like we're headed in a better direction than we have in previous years, and we're actually getting a higher percentage so far. The Senate still has to vote, and there still has to be a couple more technical things that will happen at the legislature. But just to say that I appreciate these numbers even more now, and I'm hoping that we see a decline next year.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
SETF goal to update, broaden and deepen the learning of students about race, class, and other equity issues. Is this cutting edge? Thank you.
So I just really want to start off by saying that I was really excited, can everyone hear me? I was really excited to go through this goal. First, because being new to my position and new to the district, I didn't know anything about what we offered. And so to be able to research and meet with Ms. Alshiller to, and other districts, just to find out what's going on and what's being offered, was really exciting to me. So, without further ado, I vouch Ms. Alshiller to come and join me in this because she's able to talk more about what the high school has to offer. So Ms. Alshiller is the current, one of two current assistant principals at the high school, and she works with guidance, and she knows quite a bit about the program of studies that's taking place at the high school for this year and for many of the previous years and moving forward. So the way that this presentation is going to be broken down is, she'll talk about what's taking place now. I'll jump in and talk about what's taking place in other districts, our two surrounding districts, and then we'll just talk about moving forward. Okay? So goal number two of the SETF goals were to really broaden and deepen the learning of students about race, class, and other equity issues. So the proposal was where the SETF group wanted us to create a course. They wanted the course to begin as an elective and then become a requirement. So before I can do something like that, I needed to know what we were offering. And here goes Erica's help.
So the two main academic areas where, that might address the goal of broadening and deepening students' knowledge and learning about race and equity are in our English and our social studies departments. So our graduation requirements are up here, and we require students to take a full year of English every year and at least three full years of social studies. And one, in ninth and 10th grade, students have specific classes that they have to take, unless they're on an IEP, in which case there might be a pull-out class that sort of mirrors one of these ninth and 10th grade classes. And in social studies, we have a required class for ninth, 10th, and 11th grade. Then 11th grade is going to be new starting next year. Want to go to the next one? So what are our current courses? I'm going to start in English. And again, these are, these are classes that might address the goal specifically. So, like I said, in ninth grade, everybody takes English IX. In 10th grade, everybody takes English X. In those classes, there is some work towards equity, there are equity discussions, race discussions, they're reading a lot of different authors that represent a bunch of different types of people. But we have specific 11th and 12th grade elective courses, and you might be able to speak to some of these as well, Mr. Dinsmore, that are available for students to choose. So one of them is African-American literature. Again, it's for 11th and 12th grade, and there is, you'll notice that I will, we have put 11th and 12th grade to indicate which year they would take it. And if it says honors option, it means that you take it at either the college prep level or the honors option. And so this one, you know, talks about slavery, it talks about African-American literature from slavery all the way up until contemporary African-American voices. There's a list of some of the different works that they might read in there. And I just wanted to kind of tell you how popular these classes are. So for instance, this year, there are 93 students taking this class. So again, it is an option, and there are lots of options for students to take. English electives, they take two, they get to choose two every year in 11th grade and 12th grade. And so 93 people out of a little over 400, like 425 are people that could take it, are taking this class this year. So next one we have is LGBTQ literature. And again, it's 11th and 12th grade. We have 89 folks taking this class this year. These are classes that are offered every year. You'll note, there are some that I will mention later that are, that are not offered every year, but this, these are classes that are offered every year, and they always have approximately 100 students taking them. Let's see. Next, we have contemporary literature and multicultural identity. Right in the name, it talks about multicultural identity. And this is a newer class that we've offered in the last three or four years, I believe. And this has to do, again, it's more contemporary, and it really has to do with developing one's identity, especially in the US. And currently, we have 64 kids taking this class. And this is, again, a class that is offered every year. Every other year, it's on our rotation, we call it, we offer a world literature class and colonialism liberation rebirth. And the last two times we've offered it, it has to do with African literature. This has been great because a lot of the students who have chosen to participate in the Senegarian exchange have chosen to participate in this class as well. So we have started offering it on the years that we would go to Senegal and the Gambia. And it was offered in the fall so that students had a chance to take this class, read some literature before they actually went on the cultural exchange. We only have one section of that when we offer it, and there were 23 students that took it this year. So then, if we move into social studies, again, a little bit about social studies. We have a ninth and a 10th grade class that we have required students to take every year. And then next year, and you've probably heard from this social studies department either this fall or the fall before, about why we are changing to a global history II class. I don't really want to speak about that, but, so starting next year, there will be a global history II class. In ninth grade, students have to take global history I, and 11th grade, they'll take global history II. 10th grade is US history. That's the state required class, not for 10th grade, but we choose to take it in 10th grade. And both global history I and global history II, they, one of the main goals is to introduce students to people of various cultures, both ancient in global history I and more contemporary in global history II. So lots of, lots of exposure in that class. We have a class called sociology of race, gender, and class in the US. We've offered this for several years now, and we have 60 students that are taking it this year. We had approximately the same number of students who took it last year. Again, these are, these are classes that were offered only to 11th and 12th grade students, including this year. But starting next year, it will only be offered to 12th grade students because of the required 11th grade class. We have a modern African history class. This was on our rotation. So there are, in English and in social studies, there are some classes that are offered every year, elective classes in 11th and 12th that are offered every year, and some others that are offered on a rotation. Modern African history was offered on a rotation, and it's going to be offered, it's actually being offered now, and there are 24 students currently in that class. So this, again, is history, a history class from the slave trade to present. We also have a Holocaust class. This is, has been on a rotation. I don't know if it's going to remain on a rotation or if it's going to be something that continues to be offered every year. We currently have 55 students. It's not currently offered this year, it's being offered next year, and last year, we had 55 students taking it. I do know that, because I build the master schedule, we had enough requests to have five sections of it next year, which is 100 students. And then, lastly, we have an anthropology class. And included this one mainly because they talk about the construction of race and ethnicity and different cultures. And we have, this is one of our most popular social studies electives. It has been on a rotation. I think this is the last year we're going to be offering it. And we have 84 students, and we generally have 84 to 125 students take this, the years that it comes up. So those are the current classes that we have.
I'll take a moment and say, does anyone have any questions? Because she is the best person to answer anything that you just saw.
Marina?
The global history I and II, are those required courses?
Those are.
Excluding those, that course, what percentage of students take one of these courses? You mentioned numbers, what is it, 20%, 50%?
Of any of those elective courses? So it's going to vary because we have a different number of electives every year. I don't even remember how many we had. We probably have 10 to 12 different electives that the 11th and 12th graders get to, have been able to choose from. Next year, I think we have eight, we do have eight classes that the 12th graders are going to get to choose from, and they each take two. So, I'm not a math person, but, a lot of kids take these classes. Everybody is taking these classes. The other classes that we have, I would say that, so I would say, there are some, some classes that, there are some, there are going to be some students who don't take any of the classes that I listed here, but I would say that the majority of our students are going to take at least one of these classes. And many of our students will take all the classes that I listed. I don't have a number for you. I'm sorry.
Just...
Yeah.
I just, just, I think I understood that the number of sections is based on the number of students who are interested. My question was, is, you know, do they ever get maxed out and students who want to take them aren't able, or...
So, yeah. So the number of sections we offer are based on multiple criteria. One is how many students requested it, but also who can teach what and how many different preps we provide a teacher. So for instance, I think we have enough requests to have more sections of Holocaust next year than we actually have staff to teach it. So we just can't. We're going to have big Holocaust classes.
Mr. Demling?
Just a couple of quick questions. So did we reach out to SETF to let them know if these presentations were taking place on these dates? We did?
Yes.
Okay. And the other question, it sounds like this was covered before, but just briefly, is there a new state requirement for three years of social studies? Is that why it's a requirement in junior year? Just because I've heard some grumblings from some juniors that they don't have another elective space.
So it's, it's not my understanding. And again, I wasn't part of the decision to move to a third required class, but I think that the state standards changed recently, and this is a move to be more aligned with the state standards in social studies. And we have a lot of, I think that there was a sense also that a lot of students were choosing not to take more history, but rather to take things like economics or consumer economics or criminal justice, things that weren't history. And I think that the hope was to immerse students into a little bit more history. But I, again, that's just me speculating on things I've heard.
Mr. Dinsmore?
So thank you for this presentation. I was wondering, and I'm trying to find a way to ask this question without it seeming one way, but it's really just a question. I'm wondering, for students who don't, who manage to not take these electives, you mentioned that there might be a small percentage that don't. If there is a way to incorporate at least the principles or the thinking, you know, from these classes into another part of the curriculum, to ensure that everyone is getting access to this in one fashion or another? And I understand, you know, some of this has to do with school culture as well, which I think you guys have done an incredible job of fostering. But just in terms of sitting down with materials and going through curriculum process, is there room in the curriculum, outside of these electives, to incorporate this kind of thinking and study?
So I would say that we do have some mechanisms for doing some social justice and some awareness activities, not necessarily a whole curriculum worth. But, so we have an advisory that meets twice a month, and in the last two years, we've tried to beef that up. We've sort of limped along at the first couple of years. It came as a result of NIASK saying we should do it, and we decided, yes, we want to, we still want to be accredited, but also it's a good thing. And so we're trying to figure out how to do it. I think we're, we keep improving our advisory program every year. One of the things that we have put in place the last two years to have student-led and student-designed advisory lessons and incorporating advisory into student initiatives. So for instance, I think somebody talked a little bit about consent week that we had a couple of weeks ago. That was a student-led week of activities, and they, the students created the advisory lesson for that. And so, and then they also led it. So we had five different areas that, five different lessons that were planned by, and led by students or a speaker that they pulled in from outside. This is pride week, and we have an advisory lesson that students, again, have put together. And so I think that students are bringing forward some of this stuff as well. So I think that our advisory is another way that we have started incorporating some of this stuff. So not only do we have the student-led, but we have an advisory committee who have been putting together lessons. And so for instance, in the fall, we had a lesson on microaggressions. So I feel like there are other avenues for getting some of this in, but it wouldn't rise to a level of, we did a whole class on it. Yeah.
So just to add to what Ms. Alshiller said, I think, because I think the presentation of social studies was probably two years ago, if I'm remembering. So some people, probably a significant number of people on the committee weren't here when Mr. Lutz and Mr. Jackson made that presentation. But one of the pieces that I remember from the presentation about the change in social studies and how that was going to be scaled was having two required courses on world history allowed for more in-depth study around culture and making a requirement that everybody had access to it. I'm not suggesting that that takes the place of some of the elective pieces, but one of the points that was made in the presentation was the ability to ensure that all students had access to a more global understanding of history from multiple perspectives. And that second year of global contributes to that. So, but it was two years ago, so, actually my memory of it as well.
I guess, question I have is on things like global I, and some of the, some of the topics of the courses are by definition going to be getting this to raise the race and class and gender. Things like global I and II, is there, or what's the process, if you have different teachers teaching it, what's the process of laying out what the course structure is in terms of, you know, whether and how they address some of those topics and how they arrange their course? Just curious to learn.
So I, I don't currently oversee an academic department. I oversee the guidance department and the performing arts and library. But my, you know, I've been in the building for 17 years. And so we definitely, I do know that, especially for global I and II, there's been a lot of professional development. People have created the class together, and they've created, and they meet, they have common prep time sometimes so that they can make sure that, you know, I don't, this is how I'm addressing it in my class, how are you addressing it in your class? Oh, let's do this together, let's do the same thing. They have common assessments sometimes. So I think there's professional development, and people are, not only like on our early release days, they might get together, like the global history I, people get together, and the US history people get together and make sure that they're creating a common-ish experience for everybody. Obviously, we want people to be able to teach the way that they best teach, and we want, we don't want to have clones of people in different classrooms. We want everybody to have a rich educational experience. But I think that there's been a lot of work to make sure that things are aligned within the building as well.
The only reason I was asking it was, was one, I figured you had an answer. But the other one was, the, kind of getting at that question of which courses are required, and so you can have expectation that all the students will gain exposure to the material versus sort of a self-select, even if it's a lot of the students in a disproportionate, sort of self-selecting courses where, where the nature of the course someone's signing up for is definitionally going to lend itself towards exposure to a certain kind of material. So it's interesting. Spencer?
So I'm just so happy this is the only, some of the courses that I really loved as a student here, still on the list. I'm sure the teachers have changed, but it's one of the things that I really think I value most about my education at Emerson High School was the fact that we were exposed to things that kids I met in college, you know, hadn't even heard of Zora Neale Harston, or, you know. I'm very proud of the offerings we have at the high school level. I guess I have two questions. One is just, you know, some of the courses, like I took a course on criminal justice, and you just mentioned that it's still there. That seems ripe to me, at least in the United States, for all of these questions about race, class, and equity, given mass incarceration, all sorts of issues that could be discussed there. And same thing with the tenth grade U.S. History course. I was surprised that's not here either, as one of the courses that potentially deals with these issues. And if it's not currently dealing with these issues, it seems like that would be a problem to me, given the history of the United States. So I'm curious about why that wasn't included, if there are outside requirements about what we cover, like, and also how this intersects with, and I'm not sure what the AP offerings are now, but how does all of this intersect with folks who are pursuing, do we still offer, you know, to what extent are we still offering AP History and social studies classes? And does that constrain us, or?
Right.
In any way on, on dealing with these issues?
So when we put these together, we were really looking at like the course description and figuring out, okay, what, what, what actually says in the course description that we're dealing with race, or we're dealing with class. I, I know that the U.S. History does deal with race, because there's no way not to, it starts with Reconstruction. And I do know that our American Society in Film class does deal with race and class and issues of people. But so essentially, all of our history classes could be on here. I do know the Criminal Justice class does deal with race and the disproportionate number of men of color in our, that are incarcerated in our country. It just, just an oversight, we just didn't put everything on there. We could, we could, I could have given you our whole program of studies, but these are like the ones that stood out to me as it's integral to the, the topic, yeah. And then as for AP, we currently offer AP European History, but because we are going to a Global History class next year, that is not going to be offered next year. And they are looking into what AP class they are going to start offering again. They're re-imaging the electives for twelfth graders. And so what we have now is just a, a one-year assortment, and they will, they're still working on what are we going to offer in nineteen, twenty, and moving forward. But there will be an AP class.
Ms. Dinsmore?
Make sure you get a microphone too, just for, thank you.
I just have a clarifying question about, well, so is the plan that you would add in a separate, another unit, like, or something like that into one of these courses? About, I want to get the phrasing, the way you phrase it, about the race, class, and other equity issues? So you would add another unit into one of these already existing courses?
So, so no, but the goal is not mine.
Sorry.
I was just here to present, but I think that was the goal of this, the Equity Task Force.
It was a question that the Equity Task Force has. They, they wanted to have us create a course, and I want to show them what we have and then hear their thoughts. So that'll come later where I'll get more into that, after I finish talking about the surrounding towns. But I'm just allowing, you know, the opportunity to ask questions on what we're offering here.
Sure. And if you have any thoughts on what we're offering here, if you, if you want, feel free to share them.
Well, I was just, the reason why I asked is because I was just thinking, if the plan is to add something to an existing course, I was, some courses that I've taken are more packed than others with information. And one, one thing that came to mind was the fact that in U.S. History, no, in U.S. Politics and Government, which I took in junior year, we studied some things that were studied again in another course. I don't quite remember what other course it was, but I was thinking maybe that would be another good candidate because, I don't know, it seemed like a less, a less full class than some of the other ones.
So can I, can I ask that since you are someone who experienced these courses firsthand, that you join as we prepare this? And, you know, give me some more information and feedback?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great, so why don't we continue?
So now we started looking at the surrounding districts and what they had to offer. And so I called Holyoke and their guidance counselor, and she was excited to tell me that they start at the middle school level with their social justice work and with looking into race, class, and other equity issues. And so they start with, as they mentioned here, a two-week mini-unit in September. And in that unit, the students examine systemic oppression in public schools. Then they continue on with four lessons, and with those lessons, they look at the Puerto Rican culture. Since Holyoke is predominantly Irish and Hispanic, they look at the Puerto Rican culture, the history of Puerto Rico, colonism, imperialism, and resistance, and they use two powerful cases of Puerto Rican resistance to, to continue with their work. So that's what they start off and continue with at the middle school level. Then when they go to the ninth grade, which is as far as I got through their course of study, they have four essential questions that they ask that drive their coursework through the year. And so they talk about how systems of power and oppression become institutionalized. They talk about ways that people of color are marginalized. They ask the question, what have people of color, marginalized groups and such, done to organize movements? And then what can they as students do about this systemic oppression? Their first semester, they have three units that all the students take in the ninth grade. And in those, they look at the factors that shape their own experience. They talk about why ethnic studies matter, and then they talk about the history of public education. In their second semester, they look more at, and I like Unit Number Five, where their essential question is, why was race created? How has race been used as a tool to justify the othering and dehumanizing of black and brown bodies? And then last, it's a culmination where they have a summit through Y P R. Please don't ask me what that's an acronym for.
Action Research.
Yep.
So the other district that I called, and they basically told me to go online and look at their coursework, and they offer something similar. So they have the four English courses, they do one each year, they offer the world history, and then they offer the electives. And that's Northampton. And they, the one that stood out as something that might be fitting for the race, class, and such that we're looking at was this Black History, and it was a priority for their grades eleven and twelve. And in that, they look at the differences that separate people, and they say it's a result of ignorance, basically, why this separation occurs. There were four other courses that they offer in Northampton, and I just put the title of the courses. If anyone wants the course description, I do have those. So this is what our two neighboring towns, Holyoke and Northampton, has to offer. When I looked, the next line just says, next steps are comments. And one thing I can say to begin with is, maybe we can start our work early like Holyoke does. And then Ms. Alshuler talked about, you know, even if students aren't taking any of these courses, that they still touch on the work of social justice through the advisory curriculum. But even if they don't, we have ten courses, four English, six social studies, that they have as an option to, to take. So these courses address things such as institutional racism, social oppression, obstacles to survival, race, class, gender, and ethnicity, and how they intersect, and the impact of the slave trade. So, you know, this is what we have, right? And as a goal, it's, let's create something. So now that we know what we have, I'm going to go to S E T F to see what they'd like to create. Now, Mr. Dinsmore, if you can join in, if you're experienced and say, well, this is how, you know, I experienced this, and this is what I'd love to have, you know, offered for others to experience, it'll be great for that to happen. And I just want to add, and I said it before, that we're changing the order of the goals that are being addressed. So where Goal Number Five was going to be addressed in June, it's going to be addressed at the next regional meeting, which talks about hiring. So, any questions for me?
Ms. Adonis?
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. This is, it's great to just see what's going on and hopefully get inspired also by some of the other districts. Just a couple of comments and then a question. I think, you know, regarding the S E T F goals, I appreciate that our subcommittee brought forth these, these goals to the wider committee. I have to say that I actually think that these are broader regional school committee goals and not just the S E T F. And I think it's important to say that because, you know, there, many of us care, you know, in, in many different ways about the work that's going on here that you've identified and that Ms. Alshuler has identified and outlined. And so, you know, I, I want to see this conversation happen at a much broader scale, not just, you know, and I think ultimately that is, those are the kinds of conversations we've had in the S E T F subcommittee. It's about how do we bring it out to, you know, the wider district, to the community writ large, because they're important, and they should be part of our conversation all the time, right? Not just, you know, certain things. So I just wanted to say that. I also think that I, I, you know, I do, just at a detailed level, really appreciate the thinking of having these kinds of things come at a much younger age, because I think that, you know, are, are, in a more formal way, because I actually would say that a lot of our educators are probably already doing some of this, even at the elementary school level. And my, my son comes to me all the time telling me about the things that he's learned in school, and he's in first grade. And so, you know, I understand that these conversations are already happening before they get to the middle school and to the high school. But yes, I think, you know, in ways, if we can formalize these kinds of things earlier, looking to our administrators and educators to figure out how to incorporate that, that makes a lot of sense. And then I also just wanted to say that my question earlier about, you know, students who may not go to these electives, or may not take these electives, who, you know, may not participate in the honors classes, you know, by thinking about ways to incorporate these lessons in a multidisciplinary way, also maybe gets at this, right? And I think, you know, we have talked so much about the, you know, the, the various ways that we incorporate multidisciplinary learning for, you know, bringing math into literature and vice versa, right? And, you know, and having these kinds of conversations take place in different ways. I so appreciate the community member who stood up earlier, the educator who was talking about the mismeasure of man, and, you know, the perfect example of how you can bring, you know, these kinds of lessons into a science curriculum, right? And so I think, you know, in addition to the advisory curriculum and, you know, and those, you know, sort of examples that are sort of the low fruit, I, I also think it's important for us to think about, you know, the higher hanging fruit and the ways that we can really become, and, and I think that ultimately that is the level of conversation that we need to have as a district that is progressive-minded and that is, cares as much as it does about social justice and social change, because we cannot continue to just compartmentalize these topics and have them exist in these small little buckets that people may or may not take or absorb or think about, but they really need to be across all disciplines, across our entire school experience. And also just remembering that students bring this back to their families and to their communities. We learn from our students as well, right? Our parent, parents learn from their students, caregivers learn from their students. And I think the more opportunities that we provide for those kinds of conversations, the better our community gets. So I guess, you know, it was probably three comments, more than, than two comments and a question. But I'm just looking for, you know, thinking about, you know, how we can do that, and maybe at some later stage, you know, I look forward to hearing that.
So one, probably it's worth mentioning particularly because we have, we're going to have more new members soon, but we have two at least relatively recent members, that if you weren't, you may be aware, you may have been at one of the meetings, but a few months, a number of months ago, the S E T F had, I think it was even, even if it was November or something, had put forward a list of, of goals that had been worked on very, you know, rather thoroughly by the, by the subcommittee, and, but also it identified under it a series of desired actions. And what the Regional School Committee did was two things. One, and we discussed it obviously very thoroughly with Ms. Cunningham and Dr. Morris, is we embraced the goals, but then we asked the leadership, sitting over here, to come back to us with what their response would be, their constructive response would be to those goals. And out of that came these presentations, in which, as you can see, the format, like the previous one, is looking at what we're doing, engaging in some investigatory work, and then laying sort of a platform of common, common information for dialogue, for continued action and improvement over time. So I thought I'd say that out loud, because I'm realizing, especially as the committee continues to turn over, this will seem like an increasingly, if not random, it'll be like un-introduced series of actions. But also, I'm echoing something that Ms. Adonis just said, is that the school committee, regional school committee, by assent, had already essentially adopted these goals as things that were now no longer, I mean, I appreciate how it's been described, so I'm not criticizing it being described as S E T F goals, because that is the genesis. But it was something that where the committee as a whole said, yes, we, we all embrace and value these goals, and now let's talk about how we build them and incorporate them into all the work the committee's doing. So I thought that was important context. Ms. Mina?
Earlier this year, I attended that meeting that the Equity Task Force made this, this request. They seemed to be passionate that this material wasn't being covered in the current curriculum. Now, I don't know what, why they believe that, or, is this a history course? Is this a social studies course? Is this a literature course they're requesting? I wasn't sure what they were requesting.
Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I think, I guess my response or my frame for that is that I think we haven't been asked, and we haven't, in the last couple of years anyway, had a more comprehensive look and combing through of our curriculum and where critical issues of social justice came out. So for me, this is around communication. It's not about proving we have everything in line, or not proving it, or finding gap. For me, I think the work that Ms. Alshuler and Ms. Cunningham did, which I greatly appreciate, is, can we get a baseline of what we're currently doing, and can we communicate that effectively so that the conversations moving forward are informed with everyone having the same information? I don't think that was necessarily in place before, and it's through no one's fault, there's no blame. But I think this, the conversation feels different, and hopefully will feel different moving forward, because there's a common base of understanding, a common base of data, and I'm not talking about numerical, quantitative data, but qualitative data, of what our current offerings are. And I hope, and I, you know, fully expect, tend to be optimistic, that the yield will be a more informed set of conversations moving forward of how to continue with the good work and continue to improve that work for our district. So for me, that's sort of the frame.
Well, I think that, that if you, I'm taking, it's a hard also what Ms. Cunningham was describing at the end of her presentation, in which you were describing not only potential next steps, but essentially your, your initial thoughts on ways in which one might take as a foundation what we currently have, and learn from both an internal analysis as well as an external, you know, sort of scan, to say, hey, there are probably things we could, even if what we're doing is great in many ways, there are things we could continue to do to grow upon and build upon. I thought that was very positive. Just like.
Well, I was just going to say that that's why I started off, the way I started off, saying that I was excited, because I didn't know myself what we were offering. And so for me to go and have to find out this information, I'm so, you know, excited to now, you know, I'm sorry to use that word, but I'm glad to now go back to S E T F and say, hey, this is what we have, let's see how we can build on it and come to that common ground, and see, what would you like to see? Is there more, is there something different, and we work from there.
Please.
I just wanted to, two comments. So one of them was, so again, the Social Studies Department is in transition, and they're trying to decide what they're going to offer for twelfth-grade electives, and it might be a wise move to consult with them, the S E T F, to consult with them to make sure that your goal is being met when they're deciding what classes to offer. And then the other is that, just to clarifying, I just want to make sure that everybody, that our presentation wasn't a little misleading. So when I talked about the classes that, and said honors option, those are heterogeneous classes, and that, those are not just honors classes. I just wanted to make sure that people didn't know they, they were not just honors classes, so anybody can, and do take those classes.
So I deeply appreciate your patience in being here. I want to, I want to wrap up this segment only because we have a big agenda. So, yeah, I was going to, I was going to call you, but as, I want to, I'm just saying to everyone else, if you have an urgent thought or question, get ready now, because we're going to move on. Ms. Emily?
Yes, I just wanted to echo a little bit of what Ms. Adonis was saying, and kind of tie it into one of the next steps in terms of looking at possibly starting things earlier. You know, I also appreciate the tremendous depth of offerings, the breadth of offerings we have at the high school. I didn't know all these details, so I think that's very enlightening. And we also heard a lot of really excellent examples of how, at the middle school, teachers are are weaving all of these themes into the fabric of what they do, in an interdisciplinary way that isn't so rote and academic, but is just natural in terms of what they're doing, that maybe isn't so well-known. So I think as part of that communication effort that has been done at this level at the high school, another way, another next step maybe would be to look at what's being done, just in, in a, either a regular, informal, or a natural way at the, at the middle school, that's already incorporating these values. I think that would be helpful for us and the S E T F to understand.
I mean, actually, I think that one of the challenges we have sometimes is that we, said this before, we, for a lot of reasons, we're mostly just sort of structural and legal in terms of constitutional, we segment our conversations as if elementary school doesn't exist if we're talking about secondary things, and secondary doesn't exist if we're talking about elementary things. And yet, I'm just building off of what Mr. Demling is just saying, is that when we're talking about this, I would kind of like to see a presentation that actually started, like in an organic way, like what are we doing at the younger grades? And just really walk through, and not in a critical way, because my, my guess is, I mean, critical in terms of critical thinking, yes, not critical in terms of negative, that my, my guess is there's an awful lot going on across the grade levels in age-appropriate ways. And I think the most organic way to talk about this is that way, in which you have a good sense of what, you know, what, by the time somebody is in 10th grade, what are they likely already experienced over multiple grade levels in different ways that may be either, you know, units, or even just as you were describing, weaving it in. So I don't know how we do that. So I'm gonna, I'll throw that challenge to the superintendent, who fortunately sits as the principal's, you know, educational leader for all those different jurisdictions that meet.
Okay, that's all right.
So if, yes, Dr. Morris?
No, no, Ms. Marriott.
Well, just one thought, and this might not be helpful at all, but the goals are, they're, in some ways, I think they're a little bit, they're very specific, and it's kind of an awkward relationship that they set up, because I think it maybe would be more productive for the goal to articulate what, what the desired outcome is. And then the, you know, the staff and the, the teachers who know best what's already being done, can maybe best identify how to get there, you know, based on what's already there versus coming in with a prescriptive, you know what I mean? So I don't know if there's a way to kind of shift the conversation a little bit, because I just feel like it might be more productive with the, with achieving what, you know, the core of what's desired, so.
Dr. Morris?
Just very briefly, I want to go back to Ms. Adonias' comment, which actually, Ms. Marriott's comment, I'm connecting the two, in my head, I'm not saying they're actually connected. But, so it makes me think of the goal of the goal, right? So why to, what do you do with goals? And I think the conversation in the last 15 minutes has engendered in me a thought process of moving forward, how do we broaden it from what was listed on S E T F goal to more comprehensive look of social justice within our curriculum? And I think that's a different conversation, and I think, I think very consistent with, I think the, the hopes of writing a goal is that it's not just like a narrow goal, it actually engenders dialogue that, that we can have over time in a structured way. So, not that it's brilliant, but I just think, you know, we think of Ms. Marriott, and I think appreciate Ms. Alshuler coming tonight, because I think she was able to offer a level of depth of understanding given her role, and I think I'm just connected to your comment as well, that we connected with other teachers' experience that, you know, we heard tonight, even in a different context in terms of public comments. So I want to ruminate on that a bit, and certainly as we think even about, you know, my goals and district goals for the, you know, for next year, just think about how to structure that, where it's a regular item, and that teacher's voice is, is pretty central in that.
I think that makes tremendous sense. The one thing I'd say in the context of the, of the S E T F goals that are presented, is that given that, to be blunt, the nature of the dialogue is often, I'd like you to do this thing, why aren't you doing this thing, are you doing this thing? I mean, whatever it is, and I'm not trying, I'm not being, I'm not trying to be patronizing about my characterization, I'm just simply saying, sort of concrete demands are put forward. I think the, the risk, what I like about what we're doing now, is developmentally, what we're doing is we're responding to very specific desires, and I think a healthy thing for us to do is to allow that response to be a launch point for a dialogue that may lead to a, a different place in terms of the goal, in the focus. But I'm my own, and I'm saying this, you know, it's the kind of thing I'd probably say privately if it weren't for the fact we're in a public meeting, and here we are. My advice simply would be, you know, even, I think that a healthy endpoint is that common goal that maybe is restructured, but beware what you do in the interim, because if it seems like I asked for X, and now you're giving me a presentation on Z, I don't understand what just happened, then you're going to be arguing over the list as opposed to building a constructive platform, over the goal that is in fact, by a lot of this evidence, commonly shared, in fact. And you don't want to argue over semantics, if in fact you can get to a better place otherwise. I talk so much that I'm going to give other people a chance to talk again if they want to, because I promised we were going to move on. No, we'll move on. Thank you so much. I know who our two regional advocacy people are, so either one of them could just start talking. Yes?
Before we jump into that, this is not too forward, could I just make a process comment or lead a process conversation? So I know Dr. Brady's here for item number four, and it's 10 to 10 at night. I just asked Mr. Mangano to go, because he's been with me on Saturdays and multiple evenings recently, you know, so if we get to-
If you're wanting to rejiggle it, just say so.
Okay, I want to rejiggle it.
I mean, I'm just saying that we'll take more time doing that than we would otherwise. That, I mean, with consent, we have consent, great, let's do that.
So if we could start with number four and perhaps question number seven off, because I just-
I think that's fine.
-left Mr. Mangano, no, to, and capital letters go home, so.
Is anyone coming forward, or no?
So I'll introduce, and Ms. Brady, Dr. Brady's here more for questions. So in your packet, you can see there's a memo from Dr. Brady. It's right after the presentation that you just saw. And essentially, what has happened is that Ginny Tate, who's been our special education lawyer for many, many years, is starting to wind down her practice. She is graciously willing to stay with us for all but essentially one thing in terms of special education, which is if, if matters go to a hearing at the Bureau of Special Education Appeals. So we've had good success, in our opinion, in working with Ms. Tate. In addition to working in these ways, she's provided a training for administrators in anti-bullying, and with a particular lens towards special education, and other protected groups this year. So our opinion from the administration side is we'd like to hold on to that. We engaged in a conversation with Mr. Terry, who does not do, who's the district counsel for other matters. He is not involved in special education law, but his colleague, who actually came for the interview, for those of you who are here, does special education law. Essentially, we asked the three of them to see if they could work out an arrangement that would work for them, and they felt comfortable it would work for the district. They came back with an arrangement that they feel comfortable with. Mr. Terry shared that in his, in the contract we have with Merrick O'Connell, while it doesn't include special law, special education law, it has a clause that, for other matters as needed. So the existing contract in some ways already covers, just sort of arranged if we wanted to enter into it. I'm looking at Dr. Brady if I'm missing anything. I'm giving a rough snapshot and then open it up for, you know, any questions or comments from the committee, but we don't want to get to this summer and not have this conversation, because our current contract would end on June 30th with both, both agencies, and this would be a change in the special ed arrangement. I'll say the thing that makes me feel more comfortable, because I, Dr. Brady and some others in the audience know, I don't like messy lines, you know, like if this then, right, I'm probably Occam's razor, like, too often, and that's probably a legit critique, a legitimate critique of me. But Mr. Terry, who's handling the school committee and district matters, does it, since he's not directly the one doing special education law, I feel like it's actually a much cleaner arrangement than if someone was on both sides of it. As it is, it's the fact that if Merrick O'Connell is a firm, might potentially be on both sides of it, but no individual. So for me, that felt much cleaner, and there's been opportunities at times this year where we've had to connect, because, right, things aren't always clean as like non-special ed or special ed. And it, from my vantage point, the parties, the council have worked well together in those limited instances. So this is what, at least we wanted to put on the table for discussion with the committee.
And is this, is this considered to be effectively given what I presume, based on what we'd heard before, is, you know, essentially a change in, or tailoring down or changing career plans for Ms. Tate? Is this, is this considered to be sort of a transitional arrangement? I mean, meaning even if it's for next year, is it considered something you'll do next year, then revisit it, or how are you viewing this arrangement?
Yeah, I'll ask Dr. Brady to speak to that.
So I think that's a, I don't know if this is on, but I don't, I don't know that that's something that we know for sure how transitional it may be. I think certainly there's a reduction of Attorney Tate's scope of the work that she'll do, in terms of not doing hearings at the B S E A again, going forward. She is still going to be continuing on the retainer at the collaborative for special education matters, and we've participated in that. And so for, for us as a district, it's helpful to have the same person that we can speak to for the, on the retainer for special education matters, be able to consult with us on matters in the district. But how long may this transition go? I think it's unknown at this point.
Okay. Are there other questions? Yes, is there any?
Just a clarifying question, so I, and maybe I'm just misunderstanding, but it sounds to me like we would not be assuming any potential additional cost for Ms. Tate, because her retainer would be handled through the collaborative, right? Or-
So we, anytime, so there are certain matters that from the retainer with the collaborative are covered, in terms of broad topics. However, when we call to consult on a matter, or when we're asking for specific training for our personnel in the district, that's where we pay on an hourly rate. And we've been doing that on an ongoing basis. That wouldn't change from what is. So when we look at our special education legal costs over the past few years, we don't anticipate any rise in the costs from this change of arrangement at this point. We can never really predict what, what happened from one year to the next, but when we look at trends, we can look pretty, you know, over the past six years, and look that our trends are happily in a nice downward trend for costs.
So just a follow-up question, then, I guess. My question is, does Ms. Rosak's additional role end up incurring any costs, any extra costs to the district? Given that, you know, if, in the event that there is a hearing and she has to then represent?
So those costs would be replaced, the cost for her services would be what we would be paying for Attorney Tate.
Because those would not have been covered by, by the, okay.
That's, oh, no, none of that is covered by the retainer.
Got it, all right, thank you, that's, that's actually very helpful.
Okay, is there anything else? Seeing them, thank you very much. So I have a que, no, we're good, thank you. So I have a gen, I have an agenda question. Is Mr. McDonald leaving, or is there another item for him?
Yeah, I keep encouraging him.
No, he doesn't have to, is there, I'm going to ask you, is there an item here that calls his attention?
I don't think so, I think the student activities I can manage.
That's cool. I've just, I just figured I'd ask, because I'm realizing, Dr. Morris, that originally, I mean, we, we made an editing error, we actually originally had the regional advocacy going farther down on the agenda, and we just forgot to move it.
That is correct.
When we had talked, we intended, we intended to do exactly what you requested a moment ago, and I'm realizing that. But such is life. So now we'll go back to regional advocacy. And again, I don't know if it's Mr. Demling or Ms. Adonias, but whoever it is, speak up.
Sorry, if you want, and then, okay. So, let's see, it's covered several topics, so I'll try to summarize it. So this is mostly related to the state budget, which is right now chugging along, so the broad brush, right, governor to house to senate, and then they committee, and then the governor signs it, and then our budget. So right now, it's in senate. We did a lot of advocacy with other regional organizations around transportation reimbursement, fully funding that. It came out, what was it, it was out of the House Ways and Means, it was a million more than the governor's budget, and when it finally came out, it was a million more than that. So incrementally increased. We were asking for 100, others were asking for 85 percent, it didn't nearly get to that out of the House. However, there is some optimism at the senate level, there seems to be, at least a perception of, of more support for, or at least awareness of this for, as a regional issue. Plus, the other sort of ask of regional districts is this committee to S 217, which is originally a senate bill, which is why it, it might have more support in the senate. It's also co-sponsored by the current senate president, Chandler, to, to relook at the funding and structure of regional districts, which would be great for us. So that's going, another really good thing that happened last Thursday, I think, is that the Foundation Budget Review Committee, the bill, the Chang Diaz bill, if you've heard of this, was reported out favorably from the Senate Ways and Means Committee, which apparently is a pretty big step, so they'll actually be debating that next week, which is pretty exciting, if you've been following that, that like, basically, the thumbnail sketch is that addresses a lot of what's broken in chapter 74 mill with regards to health insurance and special ed, low-income E L L. So that would be a huge thing. So that, that's good. There, there's kind of a update in terms of our senate representation, so obviously we're going through a transition with senators. There was a news story recently that some local senators, so Hines from Pittsfield, Lesser from Long Meadow, Goby from Spencer, and Humison from Westfield, volunteered to represent our interests in, in the time when we don't have a direct senator, and the senate president echoed that. I have a couple of long quotes to hear, but they basically say, yes, we're here for you, which, which actually might be kind of an opportunity. So normally, I would say emails to senators that are already on board with things don't make a lot of difference, but if they're kind of feeling like they kind of should do something for us, it might not hurt for our committee to, at this time when they're about to do, so the Ways and Means Committee budget comes out for the senate on Thursday, and then they start debating amendments very short period, beginning of next week. So without wordsmithing a whole letter, if we had either the chair or somebody we want to designate, just to contact the senators who say they're going to represent us, say, hey, don't forget about regional transportation, S 217, the senate bill, and, you know, and while you're there, the foundation budget might, you know, it couldn't hurt. So those are my initial thoughts there.
Senators?
So I, I think, yeah, in, in the interest of time, and maybe just to put a finer point on it, you know, I, from what I understand, the committee has asked Mr. Demling and I to, to sort of help facilitate this and these conversations, and I think we've already put together various materials for, you know, for this use. Perhaps we can just go ahead and write something, because it, it does have to be submitted within the next two days, like, they, they really are voting on Thursday, so we don't have a lot of time for this. So if this is okay with the committee, then we'll just move ahead and do what we've been doing.
Does anyone have any, nodding heads, nodding heads? I think that's a good idea. I think you should act, if you're going to do it, what I would actually suggest you do is you both, I mean, I'd, I'd be happy to send a letter, but I'd be hap, actually, you know what I'd like to do? I'd like you to send, both of you to send a letter with both of your names on it, and put my name on it as well. Because since you're both leading regional advocacy work, and just throw my name on it as well. I think that's, because somebody's, somebody has to send it, so I don't really care whose email it comes from, as long as it reflects the fact that our committee is making a strong statement on this behalf. And you can just CC, if it's an email, literally, you can just CC us on the email. I think that'd be a good, I think that'd be a good approach. People are okay with that? They are okay with that? Cool.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Superintendent evaluation tool, and we do need to take a vote on it. Is, do you want to introduce it, or somebody want to introduce this?
Sure, I can. I mean, I think, so at the, the morning meeting we had, I think it was April 13th, I shared this for the first time. I haven't received any changes to it, so this is still, this is the same as what you saw then. It's based on the goals that we voted for Dr. Morris and the DESI rubric. And Dr. Morris identified the parts of the rubric, the elements and indicators that pertain to the goals, and those are what are reflected in the, in the tool.
Great. Somebody want to move, they can move to approve it if you want. Somebody want to move, they can move to approve it if you want.
I just pointed one very nitpicky thing.
Please.
Page nations off, it's the, it's one of seven, but at the end it's 14 of seven.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't worry too much about some of that because this will get turned into a survey, online survey, so I, I, you know, didn't spend the last 30 minutes of fine-tune editing, or however long it seems to always take to do those last, like, two details.
Sorry, I forgot that aspect.
No, no, no worries.
It is funny how figuring out how to make that change might take longer than drafting the entire rest of it.
Otherwise, I.
Reminding of the work, the Yeoman's work that Mr. Demling did on correcting tables in PDF or in our, you know, Pioneer Valley Charter immersion school letter. I'll still entertain a motion, by the way.
I move to approve the superintendent's evaluation.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there further discussion on this item? Remind us exactly what's, what's gonna happen next?
So, I don't know if you're looking at her.
I'm, I'm looking at both of you.
I think we humbly ask Debbie to turn this into an online tool that we can use. And then, I think the plan was for, like, in the process, at the next meeting, Dr. Morris would present artifacts.
Yep.
And at the, I guess shortly after that, or whenever the survey would open, so people would be able to complete the evaluation. And then, is it the late June meeting that would be when the committee would come back to vote on it? So sometime in the interim, after the evaluation closes, the chair would and/or his designee would compile the results, and you guys would vote it at the last June meeting in open session.
Cool. Any further discussion on the item to vote for? Seeing none, all those in favor approving the evaluation estimate signify I'd be raising your hand. Carries unanimously. Terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Phoebe Hazard, he's not here. Previously on other stuff.
Great.
I just mean, your committee in general has just done great work.
Mr. Sullivan will carry the torch.
Oh, excellent.
No, I just, I mean, this has to be like, I mean, along with policy, which we're about to get to, this has to be one of the most, like, productive and extraordinary committees we have. Although, regional advocacy is coming far up our hands.
You gotta surpass us.
Policy first, although you know what's in the lurking in the rear, is our recreation group. One of these days, you're gonna come forward with changes to soccer field.
The soccer field's gonna be realigned with the sun. The goalie can see the track, you won't trip when you're running around it, it'll be amazing.
That's practically like Greek myth, right?
Yes.
You're gonna align it with the sun.
Yeah.
All right, I guess we'll move on on that. No. Policy first reads, and, do we have a chair right now of the policy? Oh, hi.
For the moment.
For the moment.
Right, so the first three policies there, student-to-student harassment, sexual harassment in the workplace, and students' sexual harassment, were reviewed by Gina Pierre from the Boston Public Schools, I think over last summer when she was here doing consulting work. And so she had some recommendations for these policies, which is why we're revisiting them now. The, the recommendations are based on kind of pulling them into compliance with the law and updating some of the addresses for, you know, people to go to for other, for further issues. So that, those are the main changes in, in all three, all three of those policies. So just as an example, for J.I.C.F.C., the student-to-student harassment, in that second paragraph, the, the kind of groups listed didn't reflect what's legally identified, so that list was changed, so it's, you know, meshes with the law.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanna say, with that policy that was just mentioned, the way that the school committee or the school policy was, it was broader, encompassed more than what the state required. So if someone had a concern about something that was listed in our policy but was not covered by the state, if they did not like our outcome, they had no recourse. So this kept everything, the changes now have, has everything in line, so that all the, the categories and classes that we have listed here are also reflective of what the state will cover if there's a, a need.
That's very helpful. Are there, are there questions? Is there any?
I'm just looking for, I see, so most of this seems to be the same, just like in different order. Have you guys looked at that? I mean, it just seems like it's, you know?
So you have political party as a protected class here.
Yeah.
And it's not protected class. So removing this so that it's, it's not something where, if, if I were to cover and actually investigate something under political party, and the person did not like the results of my investigation, they couldn't go anyplace with it. So we remove that, and we leave only the things where they can go further, and let's say, file an MCAT complaint, go to the office of OCR, and have their complaints heard.
So just a clarifying question, I guess, because I, I hear what you're saying, and I, and I understand that. I can also see the flip side of, you know, a policy created not just to reflect sort of legality, but also to reflect the, the values of the district. And I guess I'm wondering, even if there's no legal recourse for a person, if, for example, they feel that their political, you know, position has been violated in some way, is there something that the district or that the school can do to help protect their political position? You know what I mean? So they may not, it may not stand in a court of law, you know, so you're looking at it through that lens, like, that totally makes sense. But if you're looking at it through, like, you know, this is our policy, this is something that if, and if you violate it, there are repercussions, they're not legal repercussions, but there are other, you know, ramifications.
Dr. Morris?
Yeah, so I just want to clarify, this is around student-to-student harassment, and harassment's a legal term, so this doesn't define all the negative behaviors that would, might merit a consequence for a student. So I think the advice we got from Ms. Pierre was that when we're using the term harassment, which has legal connotations, we should use that term accurately, legally. Political party, just using that as an example, right? So if a student, like, play out a scenario, I'm not gonna mention one, but play out a scenario where a student feels like they're being unfairly, you know, targeted, or comments are rude about political party, it's not that the administrators say, oh, political party's not a protected group, too bad. There's still an intersection of what behavior happens and how students are affected. I think the confusion that Ms. Pierre was pointing out, from her perspective, was that that's not harassment from a legal term, and if we're saying it's harassment, we're actually using a legally incorrect term for what's happening. It's maybe negative behavior, maybe there is consequences for negative social behaviors, but it's not harassment in a legal way. So I think that was the line that she was distinction. Not that we absolve ourselves from being responsible for everything that's done on this list, but when we're calling something, using a legal term for something that is not accurate legally, it actually breeds confusion more than the ability to take the appropriate action. That's just her perspective, but that, hopefully that was, this is what your.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had two questions here. One was just clarifying what criminal record inquiries only means. And then, my second question was about, I know Amherst has tried to become a, like, a sanctuary city, or town. So immigration status isn't here, would that be included under national origin? Or is that another issue similar to what we just talked about with, sorry, political party, where we haven't included it because it's not at the federal level? Because I could see an argument for, like, political party not being one of those, but immigration status, especially given our community and the current federal environment? Just something I was thinking as I wrote these.
Yeah, so that came up when, when Ms. Pierre was here, and it happened, it often gets, her experiences are used through national origin and ancestry.
Okay, good.
That it applies to both of those, because it's certainly an issue that is rising in schools and is certainly seen as harassment legally, and is covered that way in this, in this policy.
Good.
Can I just answer your first part?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't answer that one, sorry.
What page is that on?
So, um, if, if the student-to-student harassment, it says color, age, criminal record, parentheses, inquiries only. So is that like with employment, I know you can't do, I know you can't exclude people based on a criminal record, but if they actually, I'm just, I'm looking, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm trying to understand a little bit more about just what that means, or if you, if you could clarify.
Okay, so it's not limited to harassment on the basis of having a criminal record. So we do the query checks, and we can't discriminate against what's, what the results are of the query checks.
Okay, so it's similar to that, thank you.
Speaker.
A couple of things I forgot to mention. The copy for J.I.C.K. in the packet is not the, the current one.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's loose in your stack. And with that one, the, the second paragraph, well, I guess I'll just say that, in this one as a whole, and this occurs mainly on the second page, we tried to change language to a bit more gender neutral. So where we had she-he before, we changed that to they. And hopefully we're trying to remember to do that in future policies as well when it occurs.
You can ask any question you like.
What, what does the acronym stand for? J.I.C.F.C. G.B.A.A. J.I.C.K.
So the Massachusetts Association of School Committees has a model policy book, so they set the policies, so the letters often, in most states, in most districts, they're sequenced, even if the language is different, they're sequenced the same so that in anywhere in Massachusetts, you could try to find a policy. The first letter is particularly important because it, the, I think just about every district I know, the policy handbook is organized, so that first letter indicates a classification or grouping of policies within certain areas. So when you see B, I don't, I can pull it up if, if it's helpful, but that indicates some level of grouping, the rest is, I think, supposed to be sequential in some logical way, but I think it gets a little, for me, it gets a little fuzzier after the first letter.
So it's like a table of contents, not, it doesn't stand for something.
It's not an acronym, yes. We could make some, but, yeah, it's not intended that way.
So are there further?
I was just gonna say, another update that's listed on all of these policies is changing titles. Because over the years, people change, titles change, and we had to also reflect that in our new policy. Principals and administrators were asked, who do you go to for A, B, and C? And they had no answer. So as we searched through the book, it, it seemed like they would have gotten the wrong answer, too. So we, we wanted to make sure that they knew that for some things, they would go to the Assistant Superintendent for Diversity, Equity, and Human Resources. There are some things that they would go to the Family Engagement Specialist and such, and to make sure that the correct titles are listed in the policy.
Ms. Edonius?
Just because we're, we're talking about this, and before we get to a part where we're gonna vote on it, I, I think I would feel a lot better if we could get maybe another opinion on the immigration status versus national origin ancestry thing, only because, you know, I know from friends who are lawyers who have worked in this, you know, a lot, this is changing quite rapidly. You know, even the, the definitions based on how, you know, certain cases are being heard and what's happening. And so I would hate to put us in a position where we are somehow unintentionally leaving out that recourse that you mentioned before, especially because, you know, we, we have sort of taken the position as a community, as a sanctuary community, and also just because it's so top of mind and fresh for so many people. So if it's at all possible, you know, and I'm happy to help do research if that's appropriate or not, but it's just, I think, coming up with, you know, a, a couple of different perspectives to incorporate here would be helpful.
I wonder if Mr., and I'm, I'm not that close to this one, but Mr. Terry, you know, a quick question to him, just from a legal perspective, to get another lens, might be helpful, because he may be more up to date than most on the legal implications, because he certainly knows about the policy that was passed by the school committee last year on immigration, and, you know, works in many communities, somewhat more, somewhat less, public dialogue about immigration. Just a process idea.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, what about school councils?
School councils, this one also, the most updated one is the loose one, not the one in the packet. So this, the policy subcommittee, I think this started last year, was also kind of just systematically going through policies in the policy book and updating as needed. So this is one that came forward through that process. And basically, we just simplified it somewhat and made sure it agreed with the, with the law.
Any questions about that one?
We had a lot of discussion about the, the representation on school councils and how that kind of comes about. Because it seems like there's a lot of variety in how that is taken care of at different schools, but I don't know that legally we have a lot of say. So we just, we tried to emphasize that there needs to be sufficient outreach so that parents know that that's an option if they're interested.
See, it seemed like it was general, but emphasizing the need for outreach and inclusion and sort of pushing the point, which is good. Okay, seeing no further questions or comments about this, we will move to our next item, which is Fiscal Management Student Activity Fund, which is called a policy vote.
So we looked at this, I think, April 10th, for the first read. I don't remember any comments at that time. So, again, this was recommended by our new auditor. And so I think if people are comfortable, this can be voted tonight. At this, it's the second reading.
And my recollection is that this was, is this situation was, there's a longer document, but that this was the sort of introduction, it was believed that we could vote to formally adopt this section in lieu of the entire document.
Yeah, the, I mean, it's a, I think it's a large kind of book of procedures that are very specific, and that I think the business office would regularly update as needed. So this is, right, this is the introduction to that.
All right. Dr. Morris?
Just, it's not necessarily a change in practice, it's just a codification of the practice, which the auditors recommended us do.
Right.
Which we agreed is a good idea.
Which hopefully jogs the memory of any committee member that doesn't remember this conversation from last time, as we talked about this. Is there a motion from someone? Mr. Demling?
I move to approve the Fiscal Management Student Activities Fund's policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Demling?
Does it not get a little acronym until after it's approved? Is that how it works?
We'll figure that out later. All those in favor of approving the motion as, as red signify, I'm raising your hand. It carries unanimously, thank you very much. So now, we have more than one sheet of gifts. So this gives an opportunity for group participation for more than one person. In your, it'll start in your packet, in your packet, there is one document that lists some Amherst education. is one document that lists some Amherst Educational Foundation grants. Anyone who's looking at them and has found it and feels like reading them, knows how to make this motion? Mr. Sullivan, any interest in?
Oh, sure. I make a motion that we accept the donation from the Amherst Education Foundation, Inc., number 1532, in a total amount of $3,000, and the Amherst Education Foundation, Inc., check number 1532, in the amount of $5,000, for a total of $8,000.
Could you read out the purpose?
To support. Oh, all right. To support the final AEF Excellent Grant Payment, ARHS Wellness Improvement for $3,000, and the final AEF Excellent Grant Payment Picture My Immigration Story for $5,000, for a total of $8,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving motion, raise your hands, signify by eye. Carries unanimously. We have another one. Mr. Demling?
I move to approve the gift from Helam After School Program, number 3410, in the amount of $500, to support 2018 High School Scholarship, and the gift from Amherst Academy, number 1549, in the amount of $1,500, to support 2018 High School Latin Scholarship.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Looks like we have emails afterwards about the student-to-student. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Carries unanimously. Thank you very much to the donors. We have the final topic, which is School Committee Planning Upcoming Topics. Do you have a running list?
I think I do. For the next meeting, Transportation vote, Ms. Cunningham's presentation, which you referenced earlier, the hiring process in Leicenture. I'd like to put back on Summit Academy, formalize with a vote, and there's perhaps two votes in there, one about the use of the building by the schools, but one is about connected to the town. So I gotta, I have to get some more clarity, but I'd like to put that on there. Artifact presentation, and climate, you know, the climate surveys I know we put on probably too soon for the next meeting, but certainly we can do this in June, that in June. There's other topics I missed that I'm trying to catch up with.
Okay. Are there other topics? Mr. Demling?
I can't predict the extent, but I think it would be prudent to have the Amherst Principal Search update as a agenda item for the next meeting.
I think that makes sense.
I just wanted to remind you that I need a volunteer from the school committee to help select the clerical media award winners.
That's right. So there is a clerical media award, and typically, at least a member of the school committee volunteers to assist in the selection of this, of this awardee, which is a really neat thing, and is really welcomed by the recipients. In my recollection is, this takes a brief amount of time?
It's fairly brief. What we typically do, we meet, one time during the day, we select the winners, and then we go to the school and let them know that they won. It's very, very fun.
So, A, it's fun, and that's the most important thing for you to know about it. B, I already know that it's deeply appreciated, and so it's something that's really a rewarding thing. And then, C, it'll only take up a little of your time. Who's, who's our volunteer?
What is the award?
What, can you describe?
It's, it's called the Clerical Media Award. Each year, the school committees, per contract with the clerical staff, award two at the elementary level, and two awards at the secondary level for clerical staff who have gone above and beyond in their work. Each one receives $500. So it's a really nice award.
Can you do it on Friday?
I would love to do it this week, if, if there's a volunteer, if you can do it this week.
Can you do it? Would Friday work?
Would Friday work? Think we have a potential volunteer.
Would you be able to do it during the workday on Friday?
Yes.
That would be great. Terry Ominski is the clerical union representative, so I just need to make sure that she can do it, but if she's available, that would be great.
Ooh, I'll do it.
That's a wonderful, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. That's a wonderful thing. That's great. So anything else in terms of the immediate agenda before we adjourn? Obviously, as we all know, the clock's never over until the agenda's posted, so if you have something we have missed, please just let us know. And us in that case is Dr. Morris and myself. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Moved and seconded? No discussion is allowed for this item. All those in favor, raise your hand. We are adjourned.